Selen City Council meeting to order if you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before I take role and deal with some preliminaries, I'd actually like to begin tonight's meeting with a moment of silence in honor of Connie Straight, who recently passed away. Connie was a longtime city clerk and subsequent to her retirement from the city of Selen, served several terms on city council, including a stint as mayor pro tem. She was a friend and a supporter of many of us. She was a very kind and gracious lady, who also was independent, strong, and knowledgeable, and was deeply passionate about the city of Selen and committed a large portion of her life to the betterment of the Selen community. So, we extend our deepest condolences to her friends and family, and I'd ask that you now join me again in a moment of silence in honor of the life of Connie Straight. Thank you very much. Members present this evening are council members Gearboss CEO Rice, Lesch, Harmout, Mayor Pro Tem Dylan, Mayor Morrow. From city staff, we have acting city manager Cole, Clerk Royal. I don't believe Community Development Director Adkin is here this evening. We have city engineer Humphreys, our assistant city engineer, our city treasurer, along with our Parks and Rec Director. We are going to proceed, actually before we entertain a motion to approve the agenda, I do want to welcome everybody here this evening. There is copies of the agenda on the back table, along with a sign-in sheet, and hearing devices if you require them. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
I have an amendment.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, remove 2550 from consent. Is that feasibility study?
Okay, so that will be 25, that'll be the first item under new business.
And then under discussion, I'd like to add park evaluation tours.
Okay, is that a motion then to approve the agenda as amended?
I have one more amendment.
I'm sorry?
On consent agenda, if you could move 2555 transgender day of visibility resolution off as well, so we could discuss.
Okay, so that will then be the last item under new business. So is that a motion then by Gearboss seconded by Rice to approve the agenda as amended? Okay, is that the second by you, Ms. Rice? Very good. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, excuse me, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Isaiah, when the motion carries unanimously, there are no absences this evening. So we'll proceed to public comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state their name and address for the record. And I do want to note, because I think we have a number of new faces in the audience this evening, you may speak to any item that appears on the agenda, whether it's a presentation, an item under consent, a discussion item, or a enumerated action item. You will have three minutes. We generally do not respond to comments that are made during the first public comment period, but we try to address the questions and concerns during the course of the meeting. On occasion, we will respond to comments, questions that are made during the second public comment period, or we will refer you to the appropriate staff person, so that you can address your concerns subsequent to tonight's meeting. Again, everyone will have three minutes if they'd like it. You may begin.
Mr. Mayor, council, friends, my name is Chang Ming Fan. Local resident, local entrepreneur. I have some comments about today's presentation. Everybody knows Selen, famous because milha. I live not too far from there. And also, it is so important to talk about the dam. This is what I want to change a little bit about the name of the project I propose, which is based on the political system. We all know Churchill once said democracy is the worst form. Except if we try other form failed. What I want to say is that capitalism is the worst form, as long as we use the word adjective B-I-O, bio-capitalism. That's related with water, air, dirt, trees, and all other animals and trees. I propose we think differently compared with previously we tried. And also, we use minimum amount of money. That is capitalism. We've got to have incentives, but also, we consider to enlarge the community space, harmonize our ecosystem, which is two things already get so bad. This dam contest our will and our brain. We have to think differently. The U shape, as you can see a little bit later, what I propose are similar, just like in our B-to-B, the tunnel. We're going to go two channels, one to two, and then not create huge amount of money, taxpayers' money, but we're going to use natural force and our contribution volunteer. All of you, I know that, the best volunteer. And you volunteer here, get so little payment, but you did a great job. Let's create a legacy. This legacy is bio-capitalism. What it is, is going to try to use natural force and our contribution and create a U term, U shape. So I will talk more next time if you really like what I talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Chang Ming. Are there any additional citizen comments? Again, you'll have three minutes. Please come to the podium, make sure the green light has illuminated the base, and you can adjust the height of the podium if you desire.
Not sure I can follow that. Good evening, City Council. My name is James Peters, 509 Springbrook.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Pull it closer. Feel free to adjust it.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak about Selen River Dam tonight. As you know, the council has an obligation to represent citizens. I hope the information about to present you will help you benefit your understanding how the citizens feel about this dam removal issue. Here I have Exhibit A. Exhibit A is a poll that was posted by Selen Post, and the poll stated, "What should be done about the Selen River Dam?" 448 people responded to this poll. Of the 448 people, 63% of the people said to save the dam, 29% of the people said to remove it. So that's a two-to-one ratio right there. Another barometer of how the people feel is this proposal petition that we have been circulating. We did this in the dead of winter, and we still managed to get hundreds of signatures. And these are your friends and neighbors, people here in town. Now, when you do something like this, it was a learning experience for me, because, you know, I'm in the churches, the restaurants, I'm in the parks, I'm in the pubs, and talked to a lot of people. And I was impressed with how many people in Selen are not from Selen. It's amazing. Sometimes 70, 75% of people are from somewhere from the, you know, surrounding areas, Mylan, Yoplandie, Ann Arbor, the townships. And the point I'm trying to make there is that even though this proposal petition was only for Selen voters, there's enormous amount of interest out there. An awful lot of people wanted to sign this, I had to tell them no, because you had to get voted to do it. So it's much greater interest, as much as you see right here. And I guess my final point is that I think the easiest way out is just fix what we have and save the park. I have a lot more to say to this subject, but this is going to be a busy night, and we have a lot of people who want to speak. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Additional citizen comments on agenda items? Please.
My name is Wendy Weller. I own Wellers, located across from, in a part of the historic area. In 1825, the US government built the second highway in the United States called US-12 Heritage Trail, now Michigan Avenue. It was named the Heritage Trail because it retained invaluable structures, the most prominent being the Skyler Mill, built in 1843, now called Wellers. Henry Ford purchased this mill in 1935, renovated and moved it further from US-12, and built the back building now known as the Carriage House. He installed a hydroelectric power system with a turbine underwater, under Wellers, sorry, with water fed through the inlet and with the Milpon Dam water. All of these worked together to power his soybean refining plant. He paid 700 farmers in the area to grow and deliver soybeans to this factory, which he refined into soybean oil for paints for his autos, and during World War II, they produced parts for airplanes. This is why the entire site, 13-acre site, is on the National Register, and all of the remain, all of it remains intact today. There are, there are three main issues. Obviously, this project would be devastating for Wellers, business, water rights, and loss of historic value. Since none of these are included in the study in terms of money and left open for negotiation with the city or MDOT, this is a big question mark. This project cannot go forward without including Wellers property in it. And there could also be other unintended consequences for Wellers business, which might affect the integrity of Wellers. Ensuring removal activities do not infringe upon the rights of Wellers is crucial. To me, repair is the obvious better way, rather than going through years of construction, legal battles, degradation of a historic landmark, jumping through state and federal hoops, MDOT road construction, and the possible demise of the oldest surviving business in Selen, Wellers. We are already wasting valuable time. The city could be working right now on getting bids on immediate repairs needed. You see the photos of the cement spalling, the exposed rerod, these are all fixable. The city could also schedule plans for long-term silt removal and landscaping and stages. For Wellers, the choice is obvious. We want to ensure the future of not just our business, but the historic structures themselves, to maintain the uniqueness they provide to our city and state. The city could choose to repair, not remove, and I hope they do, rather than risk losing Wellers, who brings in thousands of people to Selen and employs many people living in Selen every year. Also, I believe there are talented local contractors who could benefit from being hired to do these repairs, and landscapers who would love to develop a naturalized park with walking paths. For park inspiration, I looked in Northlake Park on Platte and Ellsworth. They've installed a looped sidewalk enclosed by naturalized landscaping. It was designed specifically for low maintenance, no lawn mowing, with lanterns and attracts hundreds of birds and butterflies. The secret is in the layout of the sidewalks and the landscaping. I do believe we already have enough land at Milpon to create a truly stunning park, and enough creative and skilled local contractors who could make this happen.
Thank you, Wendy. If you have additional, if you want to submit your entire comment to the city clerk, we'll include it in the record.
Pardon me?
If you want to submit your entire statement to the city clerk, we'll include it in the record.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items? Again, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Greer, and I am an advocate and have been for many years for the LGBTQIA+ community. It is my understanding that you're voting tonight on a resolution to recognize the International Transgender Day of Visibility. That, that day, actually, that was originally created by a trans advocate that lives right here in southeast Michigan, Rachel Crandall Crocker. And what she wanted to do is to create a day where we were celebrating their lives, and not just the transgender day of remembrance in November, where we mourn those that have been killed. So I wanted to take a moment and say, I know that, that this resolution will pass, and I am very excited and proud to live in Selen, especially in the particular climate we have. We are a wonderful community, and I wanted to thank you all.
Thank you for your comment. Additional citizen comments on agenda items? Again, you'll have three minutes. Why don't you begin?
Hello, my name is Charlie. My pronouns are they/them. And today is a very special day for me, because it's my youngest child's birthday. Now, I'm not really sure if this is their 10th birthday or their first birthday, because they came out as transgender in the spring. So this is the first time I'm experiencing her birthday. So I have a daughter, and my son has, you know, a sister. And I told her about this resolution, and I would have loved to have brought her here, but I was a little concerned, because I know there have been some comments made in the past that I thought might not be appropriate. So I want to say, first off, thank you so much for bringing this resolution forward. And I read through the resolution, and it's amazing. It mentioned Rachel, like, it's such a great resolution. And, you know, for it to pass, I really appreciate that you're going to fly the trans pride flag. So I know you do a pride flag raising in June, and I would love to support a flag raising on March 31st. And I do want to be a resource for everyone, including the community, when it comes to issues about gender, whether that's gender identity, expression, sexual orientation. So, you know, my name is Charlie. I can be easily accessed. Thank you for this opportunity.
Good. Thank you, Charlie. Additional comments on agenda items?
My name is Libby Williams. Oops, make sure that actually works. I would like to take this moment to thank the city of Selen for their resolution celebrating the transgender day of visibility, and for recognizing the transgender members of our community. In an ideal world, humanitarian issues would always be nonpartisan, or at the very least bipartisan. In our country's current governmental climate, it's very far from ideal. It is important now more than ever to visibly express signs of support for those that need it the most. In the wake of any regime that seeks to tell people who they should love and who they should be, it is imperative that these local support systems, whether they be district, cities, states, stand by these communities in solidarity, proudly proclaiming, "We are with you. We see you, and you matter." Thank you very much for being a part of that. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Libby. Appreciate your comments. Additional comments on agenda items?
I'm Scott Brody, 308 Rosebud Lane, to the Honorable Mayor and City Council. While I sit on the Selen Area Fire Board, I speak to you tonight as a resident, homeowner, and a retired professional firefighter. You're voting tonight on proposals that are really long overdue. The lack of the capital budget for equipment, apparatus, and gear puts this fire department behind the eight ball in planning for the future and budgeting for those needs. The current price for a piece of fire apparatus is well over $1 million. Your yes vote tonight will go a long way to planning for this department's future. Your fire department is also understaffed. While our community grows, there have been no increases in personnel that can effectively safely fight a structured fire, give initial hazmat response, or handle multiple calls. The NFPA has a standard called two-in, two-out. That means upon arrival, there will be at least four fire personnel at the scene. Having two at the door to make entry, and two outside if the firefighters inside get into trouble, it really is a minimum to ensure firefighter safety. Currently, you have three. The other position requested tonight is a fire marshal. This is a necessary position. The fire marshal looks over building plans for adherence to national fire standards, also makes inspections of current commercial and public assembly buildings, as well as conducting fire and arson investigations. I, as a resident, would like my fire department to be adequately staffed, should my wife and I have an emergency in our home, as well as my son-in-law and daughter in their condominium off Harris Street. Please do the right thing for your firefighters and residents and pass all the fire department proposals presented tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate your comments. Additional citizen comments on agenda items?
Yes, good evening, council staff, friends. My name is Kevin Sulak, Camaro Sulak. I'm a resident and former council member. I'd like to thank you all for supporting this transgender day of visibility resolution, and the continued support that the city of Selen shows to its residents and visitors. This is incredibly important to so many transgender and LGBTQIA+ folks. And as you've heard and will continue to hear, this is loudly supported. And I'd like to thank you for your continued support for this and other supportive measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate your remarks. Additional citizen comments on agenda items? And again, feel free to adjust the podium and the microphone if you deem appropriate.
Hi, my name's Amy Teslin. I just wanted to thank the city of Selen, all of you, for considering this resolution about the transgender day of visibility to support transgender people in our community. It's so important, especially now when transgender and non-binary people are being erased in our country. This means so much to me, my family, and to so many people in our Selen community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. So, good evening. My name is Susan Easton. I am here in support of the transgender day of visibility resolution. Voting in support of this resolution will send a very meaningful message to those in the community who are seeing their very existence being attacked in this country every day. So I'm glad and hope that you support this with your vote tonight. Also, I would like to thank Sunshine Lambert and the staff at the Selen Rec Center for updating the membership handbook, and for continuing to make sure that the city of Selen is a welcoming and safe community. I know when my wife and I weren't able to get married, you know, when we moved to the community, I know that the Rec Center was very supportive of our membership, and when we had a child, and, and, you know, being inclusive as, you know, an LGBTQ couple and a family. So I'm glad that they're continuing to do those things for all of our community members. Thank you to the council members who voted in support of those handbook updates. I especially want to thank Councilmember Rice for speaking out against hate and bigotry by individuals in our community. The supportive actions that the city has taken truly makes me proud to be part of the Selen community. Thank you all.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Additional comments on agenda items?
Good evening. I'm Denise. I live in Stonecliff subdivision, and I have been there for over 30 years. Tonight, I want to speak about the recreational loss of the pond if the dam is removed. I see Milpon every day from my backyard. It is part of why I purchased my home. I can watch herons, ducks, geese, foxes with their kits, and eagles hunt for fish. And I also can listen to the sound of the spring peepers, hopefully in a few weeks. But aside from this loss, I and others will lose the opportunity to kayak and fish within my own city. Where else can you put a 10-and-a-half-foot kayak in your own car, drive to the park, take a kayak ride, and come back right to your car to go home? Most of this time, most of the time, this takes two cars. You take a ride downstream, load the kayaks in the car, drive back to your starting point, load the kayak back in your own car to go home. I know we were told the new version of the river will be better, but at the proposed four to five feet wide and two feet deep, I beg to differ. Not that there are ever enough kayaks, canoes, paddle boards, or rowboats to create a traffic jam. With those dimensions, you're simply paddling up and down the stream, and, you know, what fun is there that, is there in that? There's also a tributary at the north end of the park that joins the pond from the west, and most of the year, it's navigable, too. I'm not sure how the removal of the dam is going to affect that tributary, but it's really peaceful and interesting to be back in there. All of this will be lost if the dam is removed. We are simply asking for this decision to be put on the upcoming ballot for the people of Selen to decide the fate of the dam. In the long run, we're going to be paying part of the cost anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Additional comments on agenda items? Again, you'll have three minutes. Feel free to adjust the podium and the microphone if necessary.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Barbara Hope, and I live in Stonecliff subdivision. I want to comment about the issue with the dam. Right now, the dam creates or contributes to five of the loveliest sites in Selen, be the Milpons, Wellers, Curtis Park, Milpon Park, and Wellers Wedding Venue. And really, they comprise a major part of a site that's on the National Historic Register that initially was known as Schuyler Mill Ford Soybean Plant Complex. Thus far, time and money have been spent exploring ways to remove the dam rather than to maintain or enhance it. Removing it would have a major impact on the lovely sites that I mentioned when I first started talking. I really think it's time that time, effort, money be invested in exploring ways to maintain the dam and upgrade it so that there's not worry about new standards when they eventually come into play. We keep hearing that there's more money available for dam removal rather than dam improvements. That is not necessarily the case. I can cite several grant opportunities that could lead to improving the dam and related areas. And I think it's really, there are many of us who feel it was very sad that the grant that was given to the city basically was to remove the dam, not to maintain and upgrade I have a collection of grants that I will disperse to appropriate people. And also, it was just today I started thinking about, well, what's going to happen with dam removal? And one of the things would be, you'd have to close Michigan Avenue at the bridge. And what would that mean? For those of you who know the area, I think there'd be use of Dell Road, probably Celine Waterworks Road, and coming back into town on Celine Ann Arbor Road. And that's for people coming from the west. And a sewer root would have to be used by people living in town. And then the more I thought about it, I realized that St. Andrews Church, which has a lot of people coming and going probably every day of the week with the addition of the school. And it's just something to really be thinking about.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate your comments. Any additional citizen comments this evening? Again, they need to be limited to agenda items, but you will have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Marion Foppel. I live in Lodi Township now, but I lived in Celine for many years. Moved to Celine 55 years ago and my husband was on the city council and the various other places you could contribute. I was on the school board for 12 years and I just want to thank you personally for your service because that's why we love this town. And almost everybody has made some contribution to their church or through the city council and the commissions. It takes a lot of time and effort, but it makes a lot of difference. So thank you for your service. I have two things I want to talk about tonight. One of them is about trans issues. When I was on the school board, I just have to mention, I was born in Harper Hospital in Detroit and I spent the first 18 years of my life in Highland Park, Michigan. My neighbors were Chaldean. I was surrounded by black people and lots of people that didn't look like me, didn't act like me. And I came to appreciate that probably when I was 50 years old, everybody thought like me. When I was on the school board, I introduced the affirmative action policy because there were no black teachers, there were no black employees, and I was really concerned about raising my son in that community. I remember the head of the Celine Teachers Union telling me, because I was asked whether that would protect gay teachers or employees. And the head of the union told me, "We didn't have any gay employees in Celine." This was back in like the 1980s. I want to tell you, a few weeks ago, my husband and I went to the place next to Benny's for a comedy night and they had like three or four comics there and one of them was trans and that person was really welcomed. This means so much to people to have dignity, to feel welcome, to feel seen and visible and not be afraid. So I really commend you that the Celine of today, because of all of you, is not the Celine we moved to. And we all made our little contribution. It takes time to get trans around that, but thank you for that. I'm also here about the dam. I'm very opposed to removing the dam. We moved here in 1969, a year after Wellers, and there were two buildings where Mill Valley was and became a big complex. So I saw the Wellers personally improving that building there. I just want to make a few points real fast on that issue. I've read the Spicer report. I'm really concerned that there's this catastrophe that's predicted about what would happen if you didn't remove it. I'm 5 feet tall, 5 feet even, and Jim Peters has, we spoke to you earlier, has walked across the pond and there's very few areas where it's 5 feet or more. It's more like a puddle. It looks like a pond and they feel like a lake, but it's a shallow thing. When it broke down in 68, there was no downstream damage because there's almost nothing downstream. And my husband will speak to that a bit. So we can't do this out of fear.
Karen, I got to stop you there. We've passed the three minutes. I'm sorry, but if you have written comments you want to provide to the city clerk, we can't. Say again. Unfortunately, I can't allow that, but we'll let Kurt speak.
I can say something later than today.
Absolutely. Yep, later today or whenever you'd like and we'd be happy to include it in the public record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for comments and thank you and Kurt for your long service to the Celine community on both the school board and city council respectively.
Hello, City Council. Thanks for all the work you guys do. I'm here to hear more about the dam. I had a little presentation the other day and I'm not happy, especially if it doesn't go to a vote to the public. Was it last year that we turned off dispatch at the police department? I think it was a giant mistake. You guys did it without a public vote, but if you asked us 14 years ago, we already told you, "We want dispatch on." So here we are now talking about a dam. Don't make a decision without the public. That's really important. As far as transgender, I'm real thrilled about that. I think it's fantastic. And fire equipment, thank you whoever you are back there, but yes, we need better fire equipment and more staff for sure. The dam, I was a child in the 60s and Earth Day meant something to me. And part of my brain says I'm an echo terrorist and I'd like to tear down all the dams, but this dam is part of our identity. People that come in from town, they look at our dam and they realize they're here. If we take it down, what's that going to do? I just, I don't like, a rhetorical question because I don't know the answer you guys do. What do we spend to do a study on the dam? Shouldn't we have just repaired it? And let's dredge it and take the peat, dry it out and sell it to the residents as a project? I'll give you 20 bucks a yard for peat, you know? I mean, there's our asset there. And put a fish ladder in. Hey, I'm all about the fish swimming, but there's other things we could do with it. I mean, we're not, there's a, what is it? In Indiana, there's a city that dams up their water, lets it build and then releases it and has kayaking. Well, we aren't doing anything like that. But we should be either creative or leave it like it is and make it better. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate your comments. Any additional citizen comments? You'll have three minutes. Again, limited to agenda items.
Mr. Rockwell, Matt Rockwell, I am disappointed in all of you that want to take away our freedom of having the dam down there. I've lived here since 19 for over 47 years. If you guys take the dam down, that means I can't go fishing. I've caught nice big catfish and released them, nice other fish and released them. It's just a disappointing factor to me. If we're turning it into a transgender city, I think that is just plain wrong. The Bible says it's wrong. If you cannot believe in the Bible of having gays in this town, it's just stupid. I hate it. I, that's why I am putting my house up for sale this coming year. And I've been forced to move down to Arkansas where they, where they don't believe in that stuff in the city. And I've worked with the, I'm already starting to work with the city council mayor on that issue. You guys, why even voted you guys in? I don't know, but I did. Now you're forcing me to put my house up and go to Arkansas because you guys believe in gay marriage and gay, all this crap. You're going to be entitled to having Black Lives Matter? If that's the case, then I'm hanging my, I'm hanging my Confederate flag outside and I'm going to let it run. And I will get some things.
I'll come burn it.
I will get another one because you guys cannot, I would not be happy for you guys to let gays in this city. That's why I'm going to hang my flag and stand my southern ground. That's what my dad taught me.
Mr. Foppel, you'll have three minutes once you begin.
My name's Kirk Foppel. This is a hard act to follow. I guess I will repeat what my wife has said about the issue. I have no opinion one way or the other on trans, but she says, you know, "I just keep wondering," she said, "if it's so bad, why does God keep making them?" I want to talk about dam. I read the Spicer report, glossed over it. I did not see any numbers in there about the damage cost in 1968. And I think the reason I didn't see any numbers is because there was no damage. The fisheries complained, I got here in 1969. The fisheries complained about sediment in their water, but it's soon clarified that that would be a number I'd be interested in because Spicer scared the hell out of people when they came up with $80 million and tried to compare Midland and the Sanford Lake to this pond. The lake up there is many, many, many acres. This pond, I don't know, 14, 15, 20 acres, whatever it is. Sanford Lake is 26 feet deep, 5 feet deep. I would ask the council, somebody on the council, to think about it, to consider it, to make a motion to have this issue placed on the ballot. There is a lot of interest in that dam. My concern is, I love this town, is the, and I talked about it before in December, there's some jewels in this town and we ought to be damn proud of them. The Curtis Mansion, Wellers, and the pond are the ones that come to my mind. So thank you for entertaining all this tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Appreciate your comments. Additional citizen comments on any agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me here to address you. I'm a new homeowner in Celine. I've moved here a couple of years ago. I enjoy, my wife and I enjoy living in Celine. We enjoy being citizens of Celine. With that in mind, I try to read as much as I can about not only the history of Celine, but about what's happening, the issues today. And I'm not up on every issue, but I've been reading a lot about the dam. And not to bring any more controversy into that, but most of what I read seems to be one-sided. It seems to be for the removal of the dam. I would like to see a little bit more about the other side. What would happen if we have to repair the dam? What's the long-term effects of that? Let's have a balance argument over removing it or not removing it. And that's what I'm here to ask for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Welcome to Celine. Additional citizen comments on agenda items? You'll have three minutes.
Hello. Hello, I'm Walter Schweder. I live at 424 Celine River Drive. Been here for many years. Wonderful environment to raise our kids in. I have walked across the river from where I live, which is out at the dog park, to the other side. There is very little water flowing through that stream and through the lake. And I would suggest that there's not going to be much difference. I mean, it'll deplete the value, in my opinion, of the homes. People are going to not so much have a lake there because there's not that much water flow. So I would like to suggest considering remediation of the dam and looking for other options for how to enhance its ability to form the function of holding back the waterways. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Walter. Additional comments on agenda items? You'll have three minutes once you begin.
Hi, everybody. I operate the call outside. My name is Ariza Eben. I've been living in Celine down here for 12 good years. So I'm here mostly for the dam. So it's been a very wonderful one. And from my suggestion and what I've been seeing over there, a lot of people that live down here, they don't know what is going on. People don't know anything about it. And my own suggestion, I wouldn't like in a situation whereby, you know, it's going to be removed, it has to be fixed because it makes the city to be a very wonderful one. I happen to be the only black guy that lives down here, but now people are coming down and people are appreciating it. And people walk over there, I also walk out there with my dogs and look, you know, see all kind of scratches on the animals that live over there. So from my own suggestion, I wish if you guys can think about it, to get it fixed instead of removing it. It's going to affect the building over there, the business over there across by the city. It's going to look like a swamp. It's going to have a lot of mosquitoes and all kinds of stuff. Not going to look good if it's being removed. So I'm pleading if you guys will consider getting it fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Additional citizen comments on agenda items? Again, you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Gordon Peters. I live at 396 Celine River Drive. My wife and I have lived there, built our house on the shore of the Celine Mill Pond for 41 years almost. And in those years, we've seen every kind of wildlife there is to see in Michigan, enjoyed it so much. And we believe that the do-nothing proposal with dam is not a good plan. It needs something done. We think it should be done. We think the dam should be restored, repaired. If there's 20, 30, 10 years down the road, issues, we should plan for that with money, grants, whatever, but to take care of it now for the short term is what we propose. I also would like to comment on, when we first moved to Celine, it was the mid to late 80s that they drained the Mill Pond to kill the fish to get new fish. I don't know why, but they didn't like the fish. So they drained the Mill Pond and it was like a couple of weeks that it was drained, you could step over the river that was left. And I think the city and the council people should really consider just how wide and prevalent this new river would be. The last thing I would say is, in the Spicer report, it talks about four levels of the dam rating, SaaS factory, fair, poor, and unsatisfactory. Ours is fair. I don't believe it's that far to get it to satisfactory. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening?
Hi, my name is Karen Peters. He's my better half that just spoke. I live on 396 Celine River Drive. And like I said, when we bought our home, the lot, the reason we bought it is two reasons. It was wooded and there was a fantastic view of the Mill Pond. I'm vehemently opposed to moving, removing the dam because it will drastically change the Mill Pond that we bought and purchased our home for. Another thing that just doesn't make, even if I were in favor of removing the dam, the numbers just don't add up. The cheapest proposal by Spicer... The cheapest proposal by Spicer to remove the dam is between $4 and $6 million. So if we use the lower end, $4 million, they said if we just keep the dam and repair it, that it would cost $16,000 a year. I'm not sure where they came up with that figure because one of my questions in the public comment was, how much have we spent to maintain and repair the dam over the last 10 years? I was unable to be given an answer because the city hasn't been keeping records where they could tease out how much was spent on the dam to maintain it. But nevertheless, if you figure you're gonna put $4 million upfront, divide that by $16,000 a year, it would take us 250 years to break even. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. There are additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening.
Thank you, David Van Otteren, Saline resident, Saline Marlin Road. I read a lot about this proposal on the dam removal. It does seem heavy emphasis on, let's remove this thing, somebody commented on that. But I live the fish hatchery. I've not read anything at all on if it would have any effect on the fish hatchery. My whole property is, my whole south property is a fish hatchery and my west property is a fish hatchery. I just, if there's, maybe Mr. Peters will know, but I'm just interested in knowing what effects, if any, it would have on the fish hatchery as it stands now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening? One last opportunity. Let me defer to the city clerk. Do we receive any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individuals wanted their remarks right at this time?
Yes, sir, I have two.
Very good. You may begin when ready.
Good evening. This Monday you will be voting on a resolution recognizing transgender.
Hold that microphone a little bit closer.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Make sure the green light's illuminated, just speak directly into the mic.
This Monday you will be voting on a resolution recognizing transgender day visibility. I am unable to attend the meeting, but as a resident of Saline, I would like to show my support for trans community. Please fly the trans pride flag annually on March 31st. Celebrating the accomplishment and lives of transgender people, raising awareness about discriminating, discrimination they face, and fostering a more inclusive and understanding society is important, especially now. And that was from Bethany Lim.
Comment one?
The second one is from a gentleman, and I'm going to destroy the name. Takawani, Takawani Kali? It says, Dear City of Saline officials, my wife and I purchased our house over 20 years ago. We looked in the backyard and decided to buy the house without hesitation. The view of Mill Pond was unbelievably beautiful. We would have bought a house in Saline anyway because of Mill Pond and Mill Pond Park. We would have walked or driven to the park to enjoy the fantastic area. Saline is an attractive small city with some nice spots scattered here and there. Mill Pond is a generally nice jewel, if not the best in Saline. It will be totally lost if the dam is removed. There will be just a boring string. The city of Saline is not just a bottom-line oriented corporation. It is allowed and expected to spend funds for the community first. Sometimes the spending cannot be justified by financial judgment, like spending money to repair potholes. It is not done so because it is cost justified. It is done because it is good for the city and its residents. Keeping the dam, thus preserving the pond, is the same thing. There will be some cost to maintain the dam, but it is a cost Saline residents and visitors will not oppose for the city to disperse. With proper preventative maintenance, Saline will continue having gorgeous Mill Pond we all love. Please do not destroy the dam. It will cause Mill Pond, the jewel of Saline, to be totally destroyed. Thank you.
One last opportunity, if there's any citizen comments on agenda items. Well, thank you for all those, thank you to all those who spoke this evening. That was a nice eclectic mix of comments and we appreciate that you availed yourselves of your right to speak tonight. We appreciate that and we'll take your thoughts and opinions into consideration during subsequent policy discussions. We're gonna proceed to the one and only presentation of the evening, which is an update on the Saline River Dam. And I would ask the city, Acting City Manager and Engineer, during the public comment period, there were comments made about the grant to fund these analyses. If you could comment on that. I know there's gonna be some slides that pertain to the cost benefit and potential ramification of dam preservation in addition to removal. And then if there is any insights that could be offered relating to the gentleman's comment on the fish hatchery, that would be appreciated as well. And for the public's edification or benefit this evening, we are not gonna be making a decision on the dam this evening. We will try to develop consensus and take formal action at a subsequent meeting either in the ensuing weeks or months. Please be sure to follow future agendas and all of the support material by logging on to Documents on Demand. If you're unable to do so or you need assistance logging on or monitoring our agendas, Support Material on Minutes, or Documents on Demand, please reach out to the city clerk or Assistant City Clerk, they would be delighted to help you. And I will get out of the way for the public's benefit. I can move, that's all right. City, Acting City Manager Cole, would you like to begin when ready? And then you can turn it over to the city engineer.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, mayor, council, and the people of the Saline community. We really thank you for being here tonight. Tonight, we're tackling a tough issue that's foundational as it is forward-thinking. It's our dam's future. This isn't just about infrastructure, it's about safety, sustainability, and data-driven smart investments in our city. We're going to explore the current state, challenges, solutions that balance environmental impact, fiscal responsibility, and long-term community impact. With that being said, I will turn it over to City Engineer Humphress to dive into the study. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Tasha Humphress, city engineer, and I'll be honest, I'm not comfortable up here giving presentations. I'm much more comfortable in small groups, looking at data on my computer, writing technical memos, but I'm hoping you can bear with me for about 20 minutes here while I give you a little bit of background on why we're doing this study and where we're at with the dam. First, I just wanted to take a minute to talk about capital improvement planning. This is something that the engineering department does, something that we are heavily involved in with other departments at the city. The capital improvement planning process is where our big dollars are spent. These are where a million-dollar projects are identified and we start saving funding for that. To make sure that we're spending this money wisely and investing properly in our assets, this is a little flow chart of what we should be doing with our, all of our assets. We should understand the asset's needs and invest in those assets at the right time so that we get the life use out of the asset that was originally intended. So, one of the things that the city of Saline has recently done in their strategic plan is identified a goal to convert our capital improvement plan to an asset management-based plan. And what that means for all the assets that we own, and that's what this next slide talks about, we're only 10,000 people, but we have a lot of stuff. We own a lot of things. And a lot of our assets are old. Our water system, our first water main was put in in 1913. These assets, as they get older, require more investment in them just to keep the same level of service. So as we, the city, as we're looking at how we want to invest our millions of dollars, it is my recommendation that we start in the left column, essential, and put as many resources and dollars towards those assets first and foremost. And that before we invest money in any of the assets, we fully understand what those assets' needs are. As you can see, the dam is located here under safety. And a couple more slides on asset management before I get to the actual dam itself. This is just basics of asset management. Basically, we want to do the right fix at the right time to get the longest lifespan out of our assets. We, as a city, before we invest capital money in any asset, should understand what do we own, where is it located, what condition is it in, is it performing as it originally was intended, and what are the life cycle costs of the asset? So when it comes to the dam, this slide here shows, one, we have capital needs. In the next 10 years, we need to invest at least $1 million in this dam. And I'm very proud to bring this information forward years before we need to make an investment in this dam, years. The dam itself, and then we have this 10 to 30-year, $6 million plus, depending on, we don't know what we're gonna do with it yet. That's a lot of money for us to spend. We'll go over some of the numbers later in the presentation, but just to catch you up with what the dam is itself. So here's an aerial view of the dam. I think people are more familiar with this, but this is looking straight on here. So if I do this, does it change? Well, can people see my, yeah, you can kinda see my mouse. So this is looking straight on, this is the same view. Everything in pink here was built in 1935. This interior spillway here, the pier walls were built in 1935 after the dam's earth embankment failure in 1968. The city added these outside radial gates, so these were built in 1973. It's currently the state of the dam, there's two conditions the dam is classified with the state of Michigan. The first is what is our downstream hazard potential? Basically, the state has three, low, what I would say, medium and high. Medium is called significant. We are the medium one. We are considered a significant hazard. That's what would happen if the dam were to fail downstream. When it comes to the actual structural assessment of the dam, we are in fair condition. If the concrete that I just talked about was poured in 1935, it's old. It needs some improvements. If we do not invest in the concrete in the next 10 years, that will go to poor. And potentially, if there are increasing different regulations, our condition assessment could be unsatisfactory. Just a little history of the dam here. I'm gonna do it through aerials. So this is the topo map of what the river looked like in 1912. This was before Henry Ford built the impoundment. This is the, you hear a lot about the original dam. It was a small water wheel like this that would've gone in the river from the 1800s. When the dam was built in the 1970s, this, I'm sorry, when the dam was built in the 1930s, this aerial on the left is shortly after the dam was built. You can see the impoundment here. This aerial in the middle is shortly before the earth embankment failure. And this aerial on the right is after the dam was restored, but before we re-put it in operation. What the city did, in addition to adding the radial gates in the 70s, was we brought in fill and regraded this northern part of the park to make what is Mill Pond today. So as you can tell in these old aerials, this was wet land area. As anybody who's been out to the Dog Park knows, it gets wet out there. Or anyone who's been to the Rock. I mean, the Rock right now is probably right, you know, generally this area here, Dog Park's probably around in this area here. We know that those are wet areas of the site. But what the city did in the 70s, as you can see, we brought in a bunch of fill and regraded all of this to create Mill Pond as it is today. What's kinda cool about this is you can see the river was, as it was redirected during this construction in 1975. In 1996, the city registered with the, as a historic landmark. This is a site plan of multiple components of the whole entire site, not only taking into account weller's site, which is here, the Curtis Park site, which is here, Mill Pond's, which is here, and then the old schoolhouse, which is just to the west of the dam. The components of the dam that are registered on the National Historic Landmark are outlined here in red, basically being the spillway in the original dam, the small foot dam downstream at Curtis, the tail race, which is on weller's property, and then the mill, the mill race, and the inlet underneath US 12 are all registered on the historic landmark. This is something that, generally historic landmarks do not prevent removal of a dam, but it's something that you have to work through. Oftentimes, portions of the historic may need to be preserved if a dam were to be Recent history, 2020, the Eagle created the dam safety task force and the city of Saline inspected our dam for the first time in 10 years. Those were both in response to the Midland failures. I agree wholeheartedly that our dam is nowhere near on the dam. In fact, we're not a high-risk dam. Midland is a high-risk dam. We as talked about, we're a significant or medium risk dam. But it was those failures that woke up a lot of municipalities in the state of Michigan to the potential liability with the dam. So we hired, that's when Spicer first started helping us with the dam. They did a safety inspection and then the next year, we actually raised the gates all the way and did an underwater inspection of the dam. Here's some of the pictures. These are the historic walls that you can see here. These are the pier walls that are on the historic landmark that were built in 1935. Of concerning is voids behind these. The concrete's just getting old. Right here, you can see some exposed rebar. That just continues to further deterioration of the walls. So the city realized that we're gonna have to invest some money in this and is this something that we should, before I go back, look into removal? And we received a grant for studying removal. And that's what we're here tonight with the final feasibility study that's looking at removal options. In general, these are general reasons why you remove a dam. Increase safety, decrease liability. Because of increased maintenance and repair costs as the structure gets older, it's outlives its useful life. This dam does not provide flood control. In fact, very few dams provide flood control, less than 15% nationwide. And recently, I was at an Eagle conference and they were talking something about, I think, less than 8% or 7% in the state of Michigan actually provide flood control. So this dam does not provide flood control. And because it doesn't, I can answer the question about the fisheries downstream. The downstream impacts from removal are minimal to none. We're talking .1 feet. It is in the hydraulic report that's online, but the, this dam currently is an in-and-out, so downstream, you're not going to see much difference, with the exception of potentially less erosion downstream because the dam is a sediment trap, which creates, the water becomes hungry for the sediment downstream. So if anybody who's been at Max Adler and walked through there, you can see the erosion on the side of the banks there. That's likely because the dam is there and it's, the water is trying to get that sediment back into it. So it erodes more, there's more erosion downstream of dams. Enforcement, action, stream function, habitat improvement, and asset management principles. We do know where this is located at. We do know what state it's in and starting to fail. And we know it is not serving its original purpose at this time. This is just a slide on, removing a dam is a net positive for the environment. That's, in this day and age, I think that's just a known fact. This is just a slide that goes into a little bit more of some of the impacts. You can see the sediment buildup here as I was speaking upstream of the dam. In my understanding, I'm this is not, I'm not a biologist or a geomorphologist or a anything with an "s" on the end of it, a scientist. But, but a lot of the health of a river resides in its bed, in its sediment. So this is unnatural accumulations of sediment and then your sediment star downstream of the dam is one of the impacts of a dam on river health. If the dam were to be removed, there are some potential aesthetics of things. This is, this is one thing we've talked a lot about. This is a picture of the bridge in Dundee under M50. A similar thing could potentially occur between Curtis Park and Mill Pond Park with the existing structure. This is, the bridge here is M.D.A. Bridge. It was built in 1968. So there's potential to connect the two parks underneath if the dam were to be removed. Additional aesthetics is, we have some fall available. We've got, you know, about three-quarters of a mile, but the river has the potential now to, you know, create a profile view here. And we have the opportunity to create pools and riffles throughout Mill Pond Park if the dam were to be removed. So I think there's an opportunity for additional river amenities if the dam were to be removed. There's been some, this slide, just a quote from the mayor that's, I think, getting hidden by my, as I go up there, but basically, Mill Pond is going to stay a park no matter what. It was not the intent, always is the intent, this is, I agree with everybody, love Mill Pond Park, it's a great thing for the community, and the intent is to keep it a park indefinitely. So when it comes to this, so now I'm gonna go over what the study actually has. It has alternatives for removal and rehabilitation. One of the biggest cost estimates has to do with all the sediment buildup. So the sediment has built up, and this is just a little picture of, so part of this study, we went out, our consultants went out, took samples of the sediment to figure out or to estimate how much sediment has built up. And this is just a map showing anywhere from five feet deep to, is in the red, to a foot of sediment throughout the whole impoundment area. This ends up being 74,000 cubic yards of sediment. And if we were to just, just, and this is a big part of the cost period, is managing this material. So if we were just to try to dredge it, not even do anything, and get all the sediment out of there, it would be between $2.5 and $5 million, depending on the methods used to dredge that sediment. So just, just cleaning it up right now as it is, would, just, that's the material costs. There's some opportunity in removal to not, we don't have to remove all of it. So there's some, that's why sometimes the cost, some of the costs for some of the removal options are actually less, there's less sediment removal, could remove the river channel and leave some of the sediment there on-site and spoil it on-site. So the next few slides here, we're gonna go over some removal options, rehabilitation. Not only did we consider the sediment, but we also looked at the impacts to the mill race, the tail race, all the historic features. We met with wellers quite a few times or throughout the process. And some more information on that's included in the report. So this is just a quick slide on removal. This, this, this here shows the profile view. So now, as you can see, the Mill Pond, the water is, you know, goes, and it drops the 11 feet at the dam. Basically, it just creates- Basically, they're just creating a natural channel straight up and down, letting the water flow through the park. This is the, one conceptual drawing. This was just intended to show the relative width compared to existing Mill Pond. The yellow is potential parkland gain. This could be wetlands. This could be wood area. We could do lots of things with this. It wasn't intended to just show a barren lawn, but just to show the opportunities available for additional park amenities. We estimate that this removal is about $4.5 to $5 million. We also considered two other alternatives that took into a, into account, this is the mill race. So the way the dam worked was that it kept the water up to a certain elevation to feed water through this mill race that would ultimately go under Wellers to turn a turbine that was, used to be in the historic mill here. So this would be the mill race, the structure under 12, and then the tail race here. There were two alternatives, two different alternatives in the report presented to try to keep these historic pieces in operation. They, they present additional challenges, but they're, they're still in that same range of the $4 to $6 million for removal. Replacement. We are concerned about increasing regulations. The dam safety task force has recommended to increase the capacity requirements to a thousand-year storm, and we are only at a 200-year storm at this time. If that were to go into effect, we would have to completely rehabilitate the dam. The dam also, as we talked about, has concrete, has structures. It's just aging. At some point, it will need to be replaced. We estimate that in present-day dollars, it would be $7 to $8 million to replace the I think this is at least 10 years away, if not more. Now, regulations could change that, but this is, the need to replacement is not imminent. What is more imminent is the, the maintenance costs. This is the concrete. This is one of the interior walls of the radial gates. This area here is where voids were identified in the concrete. The voids are not fixing themselves. So we have, so this first bullet here is quite expensive. It's about a million dollars at least that we're estimating needs to be invested in this dam. We currently have it in our capital plan for 2031, at the end of our current capital plan. Now, this step could be bypassed if we chose either this step, you know, complete rehabilitation, or removal.
Can you talk more directly into the, we can't hear you back here.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I start, I move around when I talk. It's hard for me to stand still. So I need, I need a mic that's clipped to me. So this, this cost is, this is what's imminent, in that, we have it in our five, six-year plan. We have it currently, six years out at the end of our current capital plan. And I, and this is why I'm proud, because six years before, we'd have to invest a million dollars in this thing. We have all the options to consider. And this step could be bypassed if we replace the dam, or if we were to remove the dam. So we would not need to invest the million dollars in it if we chose one of these other So in general, our, our needs are $1 to $8 million, right? There's this big range, lots going on. I would be interested to see the other grant opportunities that were talked about today. This is the grants that we have found. As you can see, a lot of them are more favorable for removal. The rehabilitation ones, this grant, I think, would be, we would, it would be difficult for us to compete for these funds because we are a medium-risk dam. So for rehabilitation, a lot of times, the funds are, go to high-risk dams to prevent that liability, that downstream. And since we're only that medium risk, we are less likely to get those, we just wouldn't be able to compete for those fundings. So even though this is a rehabilitation, I think the likelihood of us, in fact, we were the only, I think, medium-risk dam to ever receive funding out of this, and the only, or to receive funding in the last round, and we got it because we were ultimately removing the risk with the removal feasibility study. So I just, I think the likelihood of getting funding out of this for rehabilitation as well. This forward philanthropy is something that was brought up by Save the Saline Dam Group, was brought to our attention. We have reached out to them. Their goals have to do with education and, and community. It doesn't, it's, they don't say anything about infrastructure in there, and we haven't heard back. So I'm not sure how viable that will be for rehabilitation either, but we're, again, we've reached out, we'll see what they say. So like I say, I'm, we're here before we need to invest in the structure, but there's, I think, three things that can move up that timeline. The first is Eagle says you have to improve your spillway for increased, for new regulations. That is something that I, I do think that that regulation will ultimately come down. But if Eagle were to do that, we would not be the only dam owner. There would be lots of dam owners that were in the same boat as us. So I think that's a possibility to expedite our timeline, but I don't know if that's the greatest potential to expedite. I think the second one is maybe more likely, is that Eagle, we tell them we're going to do these maintenance needs in 2031, and they said, no, you need to do them sooner. I also think that's not as likely. I think it's the third one that's more likely to be the one, if the timeline were to be expedited, is if we were to receive funding, and there is a timeline associated with set of funding, we would have to follow that timeline. So that's what I think is likely to change this timeline of needs and in five years out. So now I'm at, I'm getting near the end here. So we have, we're in the very first phase of public engagement. If this were to go to removal, dam removal projects usually take five to 10 years from the first time it's brought to the public. I consider us in phase one of public engagement at this time. From the, we did receive emails back, and, and our stats were a little bit different than the, than the Saline post. The Saline post, you know, put a poll out right after our December 9th meeting, before I think the public really had a chance to educate themselves on why we were considering removal. I think that as people are educating themselves and really recognizing the dollars needed to invest in the structure to save it, they're just becoming more aware of the challenges that we face as, as a municipality. So at this time, we received 13 people explicitly in favor of keeping, and 22 explicitly in favor of removal. I encourage everyone to go to Fair Government sign up in the top right corner. You will get an email every time we post something on here, and we intend to put, every time we're coming to a public meeting, or a decision will be made on this website. Right now, the feasibility study is on there, and we have changed the email address to dam@cityofsaline.org to get it out of my inbox. It was a little overwhelming, and I, and, and it makes sense, so while people can look at it, that's really what we probably should have done the first time. And we want to hear what people have to say. This is a slow-moving process. So please take time, read the feasibility study, take your time. I'm not intending that you have it all studied up and are, you know, ready tonight with it. But please send us your thoughts, comments, questions. What we're committing to doing is evaluating the return on investment for both of the options and bringing that summary back here. We've actually identified a date of October 6. And again, please go online and send us your comments. And I, I don't know if I answered all the questions. Mayor's moved.
Thank you, Engineer Humphries. Acting City Manager Cole, is there anything else you'd like to add? Excuse me, before we open up for questions from the dam?
No, I just sincerely appreciate all of the work that's gone into the study, both from our city engineer, Tasha Humphries, and her work with Spicer Group. So I appreciate all the work and effort that was put into this report, and look forward to hearing your questions.
Very good. And I, I do notice that in the audience, we have our consultant from the Spicer Group. Is there anything you would like to add at this time before we open up for questions?
I'm just here to answer any questions.
Very good. Okay. If there are questions, if you would please come forward to the podium and speak into the microphone, that would be great. We appreciate your, your attendance this evening. I'm going to mix it up a little bit. Usually, I start with questions to my extreme right or my extreme left. I'm going to begin to my immediate left at this meeting. I'm going to start with Mr. Earbaugh, end with Mayor Protem Dillon. And at subsequent meetings, if there are lengthy presentations or discussions, remind me, and I'll begin with Councilmember Rice, and then work, work the opposite way. So we'll start with five minutes worth of questions, and we'll probably have at least two rounds for questions or comments for staff. And that can include questions for the engineer, acting city manager, or our guests from the Spicer Group. Mr. Earbaugh, you have five minutes.
Thank you. One of the things that's come up is discussion about the maintenance, the things that we've been doing on this dam. I'm right in. Okay, sorry. One of the things that's come up is what the maintenance has been done before. I know we've done some things to address the floodgates in 2023, and there were some things prior to that. What's intended to be done now in terms of Wellers? I know there's concerns there. I mean, there's been generally a lack of annual full-blown work done on the dams and such, and around that area. Can you kind of address that at this point?
Yes, I guess I'll do both. On the 16, yes, you brought up a good point, Dean. And the $16,000 a year, that was based on our need to do a triangle inspection, structural inspection, and just random maintenance, like gate, or the railing repairs, greasing of the mechanisms, that type of stuff out there. That's where we got the $16,000 a year. Now, we historically have not spent that. We, the structural inspection, I don't know, I think this was the first one we've done. We did it in 21. The, the safety inspections, we did one in the last one before 2020 was in 2011, and the last one before that was in 2004. So the historic spending has been less, which is very common as assets get older. You're going to invest more in it as the asset ages. Now, to answer your question about what should we be doing on an annual basis out there, now, our emergency action plan requires a tabletop exercise on an annual basis on how we react to high flows, and once every five years, raising the gates fully. And that is no small task, to raise the gates to their full 10 to 11 feet. Took quite a few DPW crew and staff a full day a couple of years ago to do so. Also, potentially, probably backing out the mill race is probably something else that is done, I don't know if that's done on an annual basis, but that is something else that could be done as far as maintenance.
Okay. And then, as we've mentioned, some of the funding and such, this grant was directly required to be spent for a study on removal of the dam.
Yes, true.
We added to it to address some of these potential concerns and issues. So, I mean, and I know we'll talk about this later when we accept the report. So my question on that is, at this point, are we in compliance with that dam report so that we are not going to be subject to having to pay that money back?
Yes, I think we are in compliance with our original dam application. The feasibility study typically includes alternatives, and that's how we included the alternative removal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Earbaugh. Councilmember Rice, you have five minutes if you'd like it.
I think the only question for tonight, and you probably don't have the answer to this, so it's just something that I think the future information would be great, is, you know, Henry Ford built a lot of these mills and places throughout the state so that he could engineer parts using, you know, materials in our communities. Have any of the other Henry Ford dams been removed or rehabilitated? What does that look like? Can you provide a couple of examples so that as we get further down the road and start talking about these things, we have either some rehabilitation examples of these types of dams, and some removal examples of these types of dams? I think it would be a little bit better if we just looked at communities of our size and, you know, things that are comparable to here in Saline. So if we could have that eventually, you know, no rush on that information. Otherwise, I think the way that you've laid this out for us is really, really helpful for us to continue to have this conversation. Is there a means, you know, other than just emailing the dam, is there a means for council to ask additional questions or seek additional information? So like, for example, I would not be comfortable making any decision without a full environmental study that includes more detail about impacts on habitat, on a little bit more detail on additional chemical-type things. I know there's some of that in this study, but I think a full environmental study would be something that I would need to make a decision either way. So do you want us to have that back and forth with you? Do you want us to talk about that in council and then request it? How would you like that information from us?
Well, I'd like to keep the conversation open and going. I mean, I, I think, again, we're very early in the stage of needing to make a decision on what we're going to do with this asset. So I think the more that the conversation is kept going, the better for everybody.
I think what I would like to do, if my council colleagues are amenable to this, is maybe have a, a check-in every month, maybe in our discussion topics about things, so that we can kind of send, send our requests or have our, our conversation open, so that we're not individually emailing you with things. But I don't want to sit here and then wait until October for the final update as things pop up in our minds, that I'm like, you know, I would, I would like this piece of information included. So could we just add that maybe once a month into our discussion topics? Does that make sense? Are my colleagues amenable to that?
Yeah, I don't see any objection to that.
Okay. I don't think that's all for me. This is a lot to, to digest, but thank you for this round of information.
Thank you, Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Hermont, you'll have five minutes if you'd like it.
Thank you for such a great thorough presentation and presenting it as well with your expertise background. So some of the items that I brought before this, Acting City Manager, just some of the items I brought up was, you know, obviously, we're still in the fact-finding stage of this, you know, keep, rehabilitate, remove analysis. Couple of things that I had requested that we look further into is flood, flood flow analysis, and particularly going after the, the CLOMR or the LOMR, which is to identify what the map is for the floodplain. And then also, if we were to move forward with this, what would that do to flood insurances for properties surrounding? And then a really big part of this, and I did hear some of this was part of the concern that the public has, is, you know, we're making our decisions based on the information that we have, and clearly, we, we still are in the investigation stage of that. I, I think one of the really important parts of this conversation is if there was a dam failure, what would the impact for that be, both financially, impact to the environment? And I think that we need to make sure that we have that dialed, that information dialed in as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hermont. Councilmember Lesch, you'll have five minutes if you'd like it.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, a lot has been said about, you know, the loss of wildlife and things that would potentially happen at the Mill Pond section of this. I'm just going to give you a little perspective, because I actually live on Curtis Bluff, so I'm on the other side of what the river would look like as you go further down the stream on the other side of the dam. We actually have almost all the same kind of birds and animals. We've got ducks, we've got carins, we've got cranes. The one, the one migratory bird that we do not get on the rapidly moving part of the river are Canadian geese. And I got to tell you, I don't miss them at all. But, you know, this, it's part of what we do on city council. You know, we, we get as many facts as we can to look at, and this study is just one of many things. You know, we've, we've done this with the fire board, we do it with the police department. And as Engineer Humphries told us, it's not a critical minute decision. This is something that's going to go on for a long, long time. We're going to look at it very thoroughly and make the best informed decision with input from the community and from scientists and everything. So just bear witness.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Councilmember Lesch. Councilmember Seale, you'll have five minutes if you'd like it.
Thank you, Your Honor. Engineer Humphries, do you know what the purpose of that Coffer Dam is in Curtis Park?
According to the historic documents, it was a swimming pool. So Henry Ford created it as, there was actually two parks that were swimming pools. There was a historic swimming pool at the dam structure itself, just downstream of the spillway, and then also a second swimming pool. And I think I might, you might even see it on this, in the, in the, right here, it says the swimming pool and swimming pool dam. So number 12 is at the dam, and number 13 is the swimming pool here. So that's the four-foot, I think it is, dam in the...
Do you know if there's a hydraulic created by that Coffer Dam that creates any danger?
It's, it's a very small dam, and it, so it does widen the river there. So removal of that would narrow the river there, but I think it's, it's a pretty small structure.
Okay. Does the estimate for dam removal include the removal of the Coffer Dam? All right. The last thing, I guess, that, that I want to comment on is that before any decision is made, I would like to see what kind of a plan we would have if we removed the dam for the additional land that would be granted, and what the costs would be with remediating the former bottom land for the river, for the, the Mill Pond into some kind of a park amenity. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seale. Mayor Protem Dillon, you have five minutes if you'd like it.
Thank you. So as we talk about preliminary times and dollars, long-term dollars, would it be in the best interest of the city that we should start earmarking with every budget, you know, you know, five, a million dollars? five, a million dollars, that we really need to start looking at that because, you know, grants are what I call hopes and dreams? You know, to sit here and say, oh, there's all these grants available for removal, they might be available today. There's no luck that's going to say they're going to be available tomorrow. And, you know, especially if we're looking down, you know, down a few years. So, I think we have to, whatever we're going to do, we're going to have to look at funding it ourselves as a community. I don't think we can rely on, that would be awesome if we could find grant opportunities for any portion of the dam, but I think we have to be realistic in that we're going to have to fund it ourselves. And so, I think that we're going to have to really look at what we can do to earmark those dollars. And I know that right now, we're talking, what was it, 2031? That's going to come up a lot faster than it seems, pretty far down the road, but it's going to come up really fast. And so, I think we're going to have to reprioritize things for our community and start looking at earmarking money for this, for whatever is done. The one thing that I am a little disappointed in that I had specifically asked about was either 3D or animated modeling of what this waterway would look like so that people have an understanding of what it would be. Everyone has this image that it's going to be like Dexter. Take out the dam and it'll be the Dexter. It's not going to have those type of rapids. It's not going to be that girth of water. It's going to be a totally different experience. And so, I think people need to have an understanding of what that's going to be and understanding the width and the depth of the water because people have said, oh, there was years that there was a whole big thing about, you know, creating this tunnel under the bridge so that we could kayak from Mill Pond all the way down to Myland. That's never going to be possible, never going to be possible with this type of water. So, I mean, the water is not going to be used for recreation. It's not going to be deep enough. And I think, I recall you mentioning even in some of these drawings and things, what we're showing is at a weather event, the depth of the water during normal course of time, especially in summers, is going to be very limited amount of water. So, I really want people to have a full understanding of that so that what they understand is in truth, not that they were just reducing down what's there, and it will be, look the same, but just smaller version of it. I also want to, at the next phase, if we're going to talk about removal, restoration, anything like that, we have to talk about the next phase and the impact and what that's going to mean for people around. We talked about removal. It's a multi-year process. There's going to be death of vegetation and animals, and there's going to be just deterioration, and there will be an odor for a while. It's not going to look pretty. I mean, these are things that we're going to have to live with until we get to a final point. It's not one day, you know, take out the dam and boom, it's pretty, and that's not going to be the case. So, kind of understanding all of these aspects of it. I do want to say, though, that I'm very much in favor of short-term fixes. We've identified that there are things, and saying, well, we don't want to invest any money right now because we don't know what we're going to do in the future, I think is short-term thinking. I think that we need to address the issues that we have with the concrete and things like that now because those short-term fixes can yield long-term benefits of extending the time in which we have to make decisions. I just want to make sure about that. And I still don't 100% understand the dam failure model. I know early on, there was comparisons to like Midland and the financial ruins and things like that and the implications of it. I don't think that, I think that's not the situation here. And I don't know whether, as far as insurance-wise, if you have a dam that's being maintained and there is a failure, if that categorizes in the same way as a dam that had not been treated and maintained. So, I kind of want to understand those things. I am very eager to continue our conversations on all fronts, and so I welcome everyone's feedback, and I continue to keep the lines of communication open.
Perfect. That was almost exactly five minutes, precisely. Just a couple comments and questions. First of all, Engineer Humphries, it was a very thorough, yet succinct, report. I appreciate that. Can the city clerk confirm for me, do we have a few copies of the comprehensive report on the back table?
I had printed 10.
Okay, so there were 10 available. If you'd like one, please, please take a copy. If there are no copies left, as we indicated, material is available on documents on demand or on ClearGov. We can also email you an electronic copy if you so desire. Engineer Humphries, the page relating to, or the slide, excuse me, that pertains to the historic classification that was approved in the mid-1990s? I'm getting the terminology wrong.
Oh, that's the slide right here, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, one thing that would be beneficial moving forward, because you said if the consensus is for removal, there appears to be a workaround to the historic preservation designation that was placed on the dam and some of these adjacent properties. Obviously, I'd like Legal to chime in on that and issue a full report to see what are the potential legal ramifications or pitfalls to moving forward with removal, again, if that is the consensus, noting the action that was previously done in the mid-1990s. I mentioned this to the Acting City Manager some time ago when we were previewing tonight's presentation, but I think in the ensuing weeks, I would ask that staff provide electronic materials to some affected or potentially affected parties, which would include York Township, Saline Township, City of Myland, adjacent HOAs and condo associations, as well as wellers. And then, if I may be so bold, I would like to empower Councilmember Rice, who's our liaison to the Parks Commission, and Councilmember Seale, who's our liaison to the Environmental Commission, to make sure that this item is added at an upcoming Parks Commission, on an upcoming Parks Agenda and an upcoming Environmental Commission Agenda respectively. You probably can't turn that around this week because I'm assuming agendas have already gone out for your Tuesday and Wednesday meetings, but if this could be something that is discussed and considered and talked about at your April meetings and feedback provided to the city council, I think that would be very valuable.
Yeah, we just had a city engineer brief us on this in our last meeting, so I'll get with Parks Commission and ask whether or not we need a full briefing or just maybe a summary from you for an ensuing meeting.
Very good. I'll leave it to your judgment, but I want to make sure they have an additional opportunity to chime in with insights, concerns, or suggestions. With that, I don't have any additional comments this evening. Again, we're not reaching consensus on either removal or preservation this evening. It will likely be considered as a discussion item at a subsequent meeting. We're simply acknowledging, receipt, and accepting the dam feasibility study that was presented this evening. Again, we appreciate everyone's attendance this evening, particularly those of you who are passionate about the subject, and we welcome additional feedback if you have it in the days and weeks ahead. I'm going to go around the dais one more time in the event that there are additional questions or concerns. Mr. Gierba, I'll give you another five minutes if you'd like it.
I mean, I didn't want to give my summary here because I know we're going to accept this report, but it seems like we've already apologized. We've been trying to fix these mics, and I'm as dissatisfied as you are with the results that we have. These mics only work inside this room. The other ones are working on the system that's being recorded, so we have two different things that we're trying to accomplish. What I was saying is that, I thought this was questions at this point. My support for this is to move this forward in September to try, or fall, as we talked about getting this information. What I'm really wanting to know is what kind of information and things will that entail? What do you feel that we will be doing as there are going to be more open meetings, more studies, just accepting? I know we talked about looking at funding, but are we also going to have additional hearings, or is it more of just seeing what's out there and available? I'm not sure which way to go at this point, and I haven't. My biggest issue has been the concern of funding to do this, and the issue is, just like we have with the rec center, which is a major cost to us right now, roads are going to be, there's going to be a number of millages, even the schools are proposing again. If we're going to dedicate money to this, then I believe the citizens should vote to either fund for a replacement or to fund for the million-and-a-half-dollar repair. But I believe that gives us about a year or so to really formulate that because there's going to be a number of asks, and we're going to have to figure out where these funds come from. So, can you tell me a little bit what you envision, what you're going to be doing next?
When we return to council on October 6th, we will be bringing a full financial evaluation and return on investment, along with some of these other additional items that you've requested during this meeting. I think that point in time would be the appropriate time to then engage with stakeholder meetings if we need more town halls because we'll have all the information and we won't be just guessing. There might be this available, or there might be that available. We'll have some renderings done to look at what could be in place at Mill Pond Park. So, at that point in time, I think the public would have a much better attainable plan to actually make judgments on.
Thank you. And I think, at that point, I think there may be some other opportunities or other ideas that we haven't thought about at this point in time. Again, this was just to look at removal of the dam. We had no information, and even for us, I think sticker shock is filling in really quickly, but whether you keep it or take it, there's just a significant issue with funding that we're going to have to figure out how to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice, additional five minutes if you'd like it.
I want to talk to my council colleagues here for a moment and say that we've got to stop making blanket statements. We cannot make blanket statements saying that kayaking wouldn't be feasible because of the water flow. We don't have that information yet. As a matter of fact, who's someone who works in water resources, I know that it actually is more likely that kayaking would be available should we remove Mill Pond. So, I'm just encouraging my council colleagues to not make blanket statements without the advice of the professionals, of the engineers. If we have questions about these types of things, let's ask them so that we can get proper answers because I don't want headlines to be that we remove a dam and create no recreational opportunities for our constituents. So, I'm just speaking to my council colleagues, and that is all that I have for tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Hermont, any additional comments or questions?
I just wanted to make sure, as far as we're talking about gathering stakeholder input, that MDOT is also included in that list of stakeholders and what the impact to Michigan Avenue would be.
Very good. Councilmember Lesch, any additional comments?
I think we have plenty to talk about yet tonight.
Very good. Councilmember Seale?
Just a comment to the public. I would highly commend to everybody to get a hold of a copy of this. It's almost a 50-page report from Spicer. It's the results of the study they just accomplished. A lot of the questions I heard tonight are answered in this document. It's very informative. Some of it is a little difficult to read, but for the most part, it's pretty straightforward. And I would highly commend it to your attention if you have questions about what this project is all about. So, please, please, spend maybe a couple hours and get a copy of this report and read through it carefully. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Seale. Mayor Protem Dillon, any final comments or questions?
Thank you. I do want to mention about kayaking. If you do read the report and in other conversations, we have talked about the water being no more than 24 inches deep, kayaking would be nearly impossible at that point. Moving on, I agree with what Councilmember Gierba had said, which is that we definitely need to look holistically at all things. The price points that we initially were thinking are definitely hit out the window right now, and things are a lot more. The other thing that we're not talking about is the cost beyond of rehabbing Mill Pond Park and redeveloping that land. That is going to be astronomical, and so we need to look at what that's going to be if we're going to talk about all of these numbers and talk about, like, real possibilities. I am 100% in favor of putting this issue to the ballot and letting the voters of Saline decide.
Very good. Thank you all. Any final comments from staff before we transition this evening? Engineer Humphries? City Manager, Acting City Manager Cole? And again, I would defer one last time because he was so gracious to attend and stay for the duration of our discussion this evening, which took over an hour and a half. Our guest from Spicer, any final comments or remarks that you'd like to make?
Yeah, I'll be very brief. First off, I appreciate all of you for taking the time to look into this issue years in advance of needing to do anything. I want to point out, can you hear me better now?
Yes, it's better.
I just wanted to point out, this is the main body of the report. There's, I think, like 800 pages of appendices, so I probably don't need to read every single page, but just know there's more to it than just what's in here, so I appreciate your comments. That's all I got.
Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening. To my colleagues on the dais, if you do have additional points of clarification or questions pertaining to this presentation, please direct those to the city manager and/or city engineer in the days and weeks ahead. And again, this matter will be revisited at a future meeting, but we will, of course, take action later this evening simply to acknowledge receipt of the feasibility study. Again, we appreciate everyone's comment on this matter. We're going to transition now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. There was already a motion, actually, we have amended the agenda to strike two items, the transgender day of visibility resolution and the dam removal feasibility study. So, is there a motion to acknowledge, or, excuse me, to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Approve as amended.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Dillon. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended, striking those two items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business. We have three action items. The first is Agenda Item 25-45, application for special land use for 450 East Michigan Avenue, Suite 3. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve with conditions of special land use for 450 East Michigan Avenue, Suite 3, Saline, Michigan 48176, parcel number 18-12-31-360-004, with the following conditions. One, net worship/service, days and hours limited to Friday from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. and Sundays from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Seale to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, I'll let Lesch be the second. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. Gierba. City Manager Cole, in the absence of Community Development Director Adkin, did you want to comment in particular, I believe it was council's request at our last meeting, to get some insights from Legal prior to taking action on this matter?
Yes, very briefly. When we did confirm that the taxability remains intact for the property, and two, we did also confirm that the surface hours limitations would carry forward.
Let me stop you real quick. I apologize. Folks, if you want to have a conversation, you're welcome to do so, but if you could please take it into the hallway, that would be great. We do have some additional business that we need to consider, and I want to make sure that my colleagues are not interrupted during their presentation or remarks. Please continue.
Absolutely. So, the second item was if the conditional use could carry forward. That does carry forward. In fact, I think councilperson Dillon may have some additional comments that she'd like to speak to in regards to that. So, those were the two outstanding items that we did research and come back with.
Very good. Mr. Gierba is the liaison to the Planning Commission. Are there any additional remarks you'd like to make at this time?
No, I said the last time, we looked at this as being the main use, is the coffee shop and these auxiliary uses, the church at this time, and the only concern was parking, and it's likely the attendance there is approximately required to be at 55, so that seems reasonable that it won't be a nuisance. And if it is, we have cohability to enforce it.
Very good. Are there questions or comments for either the representative from the Planning Commission, and I could probably address some questions too, as the other member of the Planning Commission, but more importantly, for city staff? Mayor Protem Dillon?
Thank you. As Acting City Manager Cole mentioned, I did have an opportunity to speak with Community Development Director Adkin today, and he was able to confirm some of my questions. Where there are times when we use word service and we use current worship, they are interchangeable and they're actually, I believe, both listed as part of the condition, so that was a non-issue. And my question was, could this church be used for things like, say, a youth group or an AA meeting or something that didn't fit into these two categories of service or worship? And he indicated that they would not be able to. The church's purpose was for service worship, and so it can only use within the timeframe that's being allowed through the condition. My other question was, should the business change and, say, another church would go in, they would be required to maintain the same standards of the special land use, i.e., they would have to have the same hours. If they wanted to change hours, they would have to come back and get a variance. And so, that really clarified some of the questions I had previously asked.
Very good. Are there additional questions or discussion on the motion? There appears to be none, and we have a motion on the floor moved by Seale, seconded by Lesch, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Ayes have, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to unfinished business. Item 25-46, Saline Area Fire Department approval and adoption of budget. This is a series of two motions. The first motion will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memorandum and to approve or not to approve the... not to approve the fire capital budget as presented on February the 10th, 2025.
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge. Was that seconded by Lesh again?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Let me begin with Acting City Manager Cole. Are there any comments you'd like to make pertaining to, actually, you could comment now on both motions if you were so inclined. I'll leave it to your judgment.
Absolutely. So before we get, we want to take a moment to express our deep appreciation for the brave employees of the Celine Area Fire Department. Our firefighters put their lives on the line to protect our homes, our businesses, families, often under the most difficult and unpredictable circumstances. Their dedication, skill, and unwavering commitment to service are the backbone of our community's safety, and we are profoundly grateful for all that they do. That is why, as we approached this year's fire budget, we did so with a singular focus, ensuring that every dollar invested strengthens their ability to do their job safely and effectively. Unfortunately, there was a significant gap in city communication regarding this budget. While it was prepared under the previous city manager, key stakeholders, including ourselves, were not engaged in the discussions as expected. When Councilmember Lesh and I attended what we thought would be an initial budget review meeting, it was actually scheduled for its first approval. This year's fire budget includes the largest funding increase in SAFD's history. The city's portion is over $1 million. With an increase of this magnitude, the city has the responsibility to ensure that these funds are allocated in the most strategic and impactful way, following a proper process. The primary concern was making sure that this investment truly enhances firefighter safety and provides the best possible protection for our residents. One of the areas of discussion was the proposed hiring of a fire marshal. Given that our fire chief was, already had held this certification and fire prevention was within his job description, there were questions about whether adding this position was most effective use of resources. There was also concern that the decision was more difficult without understanding the research and analysis that we had anticipated. Additionally, we must balance our investment in personnel with critical infrastructure needs. Some SAFD equipment is failing and the safety of living quarters certainly needs improvement. But before we were adding more positions, the city wanted to address these foundational issues so that our firefighters could have the tools and conditions they need to do their job safely and as effectively as possible. Our approach to this budget is not just about cutting corners, it's about ensuring that every dollar is used to build a fire department that's strong, resilient, and prepared. We hold our firefighters in the highest regard, and our goal is to make certain that our investment truly supports them and their mission. In closing, I just want to reiterate that our deep respect and gratitude for the men of SAFD, their courage, dedication, professionalism, are what make our community safe.
Very good. Thank you. Before we open up for questions or comments, I do want to provide an opportunity for both of our voting representatives to the Fire Board, an opportunity to speak to this issue. They were both gracious enough to send us a communique last week pertaining to this matter. Let me begin with Ms. Lori Champion, who's in the audience. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Lori, but if you'd like to comment, we would welcome you to the podium to share some remarks pertaining to both motions. One, to either approve or not to approve the fire capital budget, and then a subsequent motion to either approve or not to approve the operational budget for the subsequent fiscal year.
Well, thank you so much for your kindness and giving me a moment to speak. I want to thank everybody for the diligence that they've exhibited in carefully considering the proposed budget that's been put before you. I do want to assure you in recognizing that there were some communication breakdowns, that's unfortunate and unusual, but I want to assure you that my personal observation, belief, and experience as a participant in the process is that representatives from the city and the three townships were all involved in the planning process and reviewing the budget. This was done over a series of meetings and months. There were many adjustments made in response to concerns about being careful about expenditures and that type of thing. But at the end of the day, although it is a significant increase this year, the reason for that is largely to help the department catch up on a lack of spending in prior years. And I know that from working with all of the colleagues, again, coming from across the various geographies, but also at various levels, that any further expenditures will be considered, or any further increases in budget in the future, adjustments in budget will be considered very carefully and equally carefully in the future. So again, I just want to thank you for the time to offer those comments and assurances to you this evening.
Very good. Hang tight there, Lori, in the event that there are questions or comments that are best addressed by you. Mr. Lesh, any additional remarks you'd like to make?
I think both the city manager and Ms. Champion very succinctly summarized my opinion also, so.
Very good. Questions or comments from the dais? None? Okay. Go ahead. Who has a question?
I didn't know how you were going to do it.
Yeah, no. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is a tough one. I mean, I spent 10 years on the Fire Board and it was, it was sort of a process in process. And it was sort of a kick the can, we can do next year, next year, next year, and then all of a sudden, it's time to do things. I understand that there's increases that are needed. I think these are drastic at this point, based on the amount that we are going for because it's not solving a problem. It's trying to address too much too fast. And I think that we need to have a better understanding. Last year, the fire marshal position came up and it was voted down, but yet this year there was nothing that was brought back to the Fire Board that indicated why that position needed to come back. We do, as was indicated previously by Acting City Manager, our current fire chief is a fire marshal. And I think at this point that there should be an opportunity for him to do some of those tasks and put the dollars from that position towards other things, namely, equipment. The fire department regularly has two pieces of equipment that are out of service. It's very difficult to fight fires when you don't have the equipment to go into them. And so I would like to see the effort going into getting what we need. I understand the two in, two out. We've been talking about that for years. We've brought people on. That's how we got to the three, and we're slowly getting there. But to bring on three full-time positions at one time is a really big piece for us. It's a small department. It's, you know, it's just, it's just too much. When you look at the number of structural fires that we have based on the number of service calls, it is the smallest percentage. Obviously, they're the most important at times. And that's where we have to just figure out about staffing and how to work it so that we can do this. I'm not saying we shouldn't hire somebody, but bringing on three additional firefighters and a fire marshal all at the same time, I think, is too much for the communities to bear budget-wise.
Very good. Thank you for your comments, Mayor Protem Dillon. Mr. Gierba? Councilmember Riel?
As you know, back in 2020, when Ms. McCauley, sorry.
Champion?
Champion. Sorry, I was thinking of someone else. Talked about these concerns and issues that we had with our fire department to make sure that we brought it into the 2025 or even further. I had concerns with operational risks, with concerned concerns, OSHA managing, OSHA concerns, making sure that the equipment was available, making sure that the oversight was there, making sure administratively, we put things into place, making sure that there's accountability. I do not see that happening. I even looked today, we have, you go out and look at the fire department's website, the last minutes aren't even there from the February meeting, which was a point of contention when some things were said. I don't understand how, for the last 10 years, the type of activity and requirements that we have expected in this city in terms of accountability, recording meetings, making sure that meetings are held, additional information is provided, all of those things. And this is not to reflect on you, but these are the issues that have come up.
Can I interrupt you real quick? I apologize. My apologies for interrupting my colleague. Been notified that there was an accident outside in the parking lot involving a silver Ford Fusion, a silver Ford Fusion. If that's your vehicle, please step outside with Officer Kelsey and she'll handle the situation. My apologies. Mr. Gierba, please continue.
Sorry to hear that. Again, as we've seen this, and I don't know how we're going to fix this. I'm hoping moving forward that we have new representation and that we can address this. But again, when I look at things, and this is my accountant hat, and I've been called all kinds of names, so I don't have a problem having accountant hat. When I look at the annual audit, the budget categories don't match what we're seeing here, presented here. I have no idea what happened with the $100,000 that was left over from last year. That's not identified or budgeted. Did that just go into the fund balance? Is that being used? I again go back to, we need to see the behavior and what's happening in that operation to understand why we are at where we're at and why there's this disagreement. I still, does not sit right with me to know that we had a situation, we had a meeting in which our fire chief was trying to save his job by using his children as a way to convince the board. Children crying in front of a board. That is behavior I do not see in a leader. And I don't understand how the board didn't address that at the time. As we move forward, for me, I want to see an accurate and clear strategic plan, which apparently has been received, but this board has not seen it. I also want to see what is going on. There is ideas of expanding this to include the entire York Township? We're understanding that we can't even get firemen in Syle and in Pittsfield, and we're going to be hiring it and expanding? I want to know what we're doing because if we're going to start building substations and everything else, should we be growing or should we be shrinking and making sure we're maintaining an area that we can protect and make sure our citizens are receiving the best services and that our firemen have the best investment into their operations? So for me, I don't know where it's going on, but I'm done with this for the last two years of hearing all of these excuses, and it seems to be among the members that are part of that board. And for me to support a budget without all of that information and providing it is a concern. My vote is not for not providing investment. My vote is for a lack of understanding and leadership.
When am I allowed to respond?
You can respond now.
So with all respect, I now have a sense for the reason why I've had no response to my request, to the city, and specifically to council members who've just addressed me. Further specific questions, concerns, anxieties, guidance, direction to both myself and Mr. Lesh, who are your appointed representatives to the Fire Board? I'm a relatively recent Fire Board appointee, as you know. I have specifically requested on multiple occasions if there were any concerns that you describe those to us clearly so that we can better represent the city on the Fire Board. The agenda, excuse me, the budget that you have in front of you was created by the city's manager, working with the fire chief. Prior to my involvement on the board, though, with my knowledge, because it was presented to the steering committee and subsequently to the budget committee, where I do not have any involvement, but another city of Celine appointee does. And with all due respect, my suggestion is that the city needs to find a way to have a good and disciplined approach to reviewing these matters, to identifying any issues, and to communicating those clearly. Before I am standing in front of you tonight, I've asked you both if you had any concerns, questions, specific issues that we could address over the past month or more. So I'm mystified why I'm hearing that now, standing in front of you this evening, and why I was invited specifically to come to this meeting tonight. So I'm not appreciating feeling like I'm being blindsided this evening.
This direction isn't towards you. May I make that quite clear? This behavior and this activity has happened for the last four to five years, and you're now being put in a situation in which you're expected to have to fix these things. So we do need to talk with you and have you as our representation, but I can't understand how we've gotten to this. And as for our former manager, we are also now having to pay for a $1 million fix at the rec center because somebody made a decision and then had to, didn't make the right decision. So we need to fix some issues on our own side. But some of these activities, as we've talked and you've experienced it, the things such as I'm concerned about is the accountability and seeing what's happening. I know there's been behaviors in those boards. I've attended them. But if the public was to see this, they'd have a better understanding of their operations and can understand what and what's happening. And unfortunately, we're only one of four. So what we ask for, unfortunately, I can make a statement, how to make this happen would have been the accountability of our other previous representation. But moving forward, these are one of the things that I want to see is more accountability. So we as a city and as all of our community partners, understand what is happening and why are we moving forward? Because if we've got one partner that wants to have a bigger and better place at the cost of our citizens or our safety, I have a concern. So I know you're up there, and unfortunately, you're taking a brunt of this.
That's all right.
But you and I have talked about these things and made these concerns and issues before. They're not new. They've been part of our risk management assessment and so forth. So if there's a reason why I'm voting the way I'm voting, it's this dissatisfaction that I've had with how we've moved here, and these are not new items. They've been going on for two years. Thank you.
Are there additional comments pertaining to the, our first motion is simply to acknowledge receipt of the capital improvement budget. So let's try to focus as best we can the comments and questions on that. We can get to the broader issue during the subsequent motion, but I appreciate all the remarks. Councilmember Rice, did you have a commoner question for staff or for our two representatives to the Fire Board?
So I'm going to relate this, I guess loosely, to our motion currently, but I echo my colleague in the fact that I feel like these decisions are being made in a vacuum. And I do think we take some responsibility on our end as well because this is my second term on council. I'm just a couple of months into my second term. You know, I've kind of got my feet wet on most of this. I don't understand this Fire Board situation and where this contention has come from. I don't feel like we're updated properly. I don't feel like I'm ever in the know until it comes time to make a decision and then I'm scrambling to find information. There has to be a better way that when we get to the point where we're making decisions that, you know, put real weight on the taxpayers of the city of Celine, that also contribute to their wellness and safety, that we are as informed and we've been informed all along the way. I feel like when we get to these points, I'm then inundated with information about histories, about plans for the future that I'd never heard of before, and then I have a million questions as to how do we even get to the plan for the future that I'm just hearing about. There's got to be a better process for this so that on a yearly basis, we don't get to this point where we're making decisions about the health and safety of our community, but we've got all this other junk happening in our heads as well. And I think step one is more frequent updates to this board, either from the members of our Fire Board or through some sort of notifications or updates. Minutes need to be recorded, meetings need to be recorded, the community needs to be up to date because we also look like jerks at the table when we push back on these things because the community too hasn't been informed until something blows up. So there needs to be more back and forth between all of the communities with our representation on the Fire Boards providing us information, but also the Fire Board itself with some sort of update to the communities on either a quarterly, you know, a biannual basis, something along those lines. We don't get to a day like today where I feel pressured because I know that the fire department deserves to be safe, our community deserves to be safe, but there's all this drama behind a decision I need to make. That's all I'll say about that.
And I think the deficiencies that you've noted, that Mr. Gierba noted, that Ms. Champion addressed, those concerns have legitimacy, and I think for the most part, those are fair. To the point that the Acting City Manager made, there was a disconnect in terms of negotiations that were happening in the third or fourth quarter of 2024 pertaining to the ensuing fire budget that were not appropriately communicated to staff and to council. So that can easily be rectified in the future. I think to your, the broader point is, the additional solution is, I think, also fairly easy to implement. And Ms. Champion and Mr. Lesh and perhaps Councilmember Dillon and the city manager and I will actually be debriefing before the next Fire Board meeting, but I think having our representatives to the Fire Board provide some sort of email communication our representatives to the Fire Board provide some sort of email communication subsequent to each Fire Board to give a synopsis of what was done, what their take was on various matters would probably be very beneficial to this body as it considers subsequent policy decisions, excuse me, or the allocation of financial resources. So your points are well taken. I think those issues can be fairly easily addressed, and we can put some protocols and policies in place to prevent the disconnect of information in the future.
I have specifically requested and recommended that we have a meeting of stakeholders before Fire Board meetings, so that we clearly understand what the concerns and issues are, that we maintain an open items list on the things we're working on, and that we have a meeting after every Fire Board meeting, so we debrief on all of that. And I just, all I can do is encourage that we develop a disciplined, professional process of communication, so we don't have this type of meeting again, would be my expectation.
Yep, well stated, Lori. Are there additional, I want to hear from everybody at least one time before we take additional questions. Mr. CEO, do you have comments or questions pertaining to the motion to acknowledge?
This is touted as a 10-year plan. So are we putting in motion, if we vote in the affirmative to approve this, that this is something that's in place for the next 10 years? Sorry.
My understanding, and I wasn't part of the process until recently in terms of being on the Fire Board, my understanding was that this 10-year plan was given to the city. I'm not clear on who all has seen it or how it's been disseminated or if it has or not. My understanding is not that you've been asked to approve a 10-year plan. The Fire Board has not approved a 10-year plan. It's simply out there for discussion. The only thing that I believe that we have done in terms of the Fire Boards' conversation, even a Fire Board approval doesn't mean anything. All it means is the budget's going to come to the city and the townships for approval, and it's just for one year.
Very good, thank you.
Chuck, is that your understanding as well? Thank you so much.
Let me say a few things pertaining to this first motion, which is 2546. First, again, appreciate the service and dedication of Ms. Champion and Mr. Lesh, who are our representatives on the Fire Board. And I would note primarily for the public's edification that prior to being appointed as the official liaison from the city to the Fire Board, Ms. Champion has been helping the Fire Department for over a year and a half on a risk matrix, a risk registry, which I think has been profoundly beneficial to the department. I think that work should continue. I do want to state again for the record, a risk registry, a risk matrix that is updated and evaluated on a frequent basis is critically important, but it is not a substitute for a strategic plan. Those are mutually exclusive documents. Certainly, a risk matrix should help to influence a strategic plan, but it is not a strategic plan. And so I keep revisiting this point, that the department and ultimately the community would benefit from the Fire Board having a codified strategic plan, which is reviewed, written in very clear and succinct language, adopted by the board, and then subsequently sent to the four participating municipalities for review and approval. And I hope that's a priority for the board in the ensuing months, and hopefully that's something that can be accomplished in the waning months of 2025. As it relates to this first motion to approve the capital improvement budget, I will be voting in the affirmative. As was stated earlier, our firefighters do need modern operable equipment, and I think making strategic investments into a capital improvement fund is absolutely essential. I do want to note that in 2024, we did approve a working group of the Fire Department to consider financing options for future capital purchases, which I hope there's forward momentum on. Historically, the Fire Department has always paid cash for large equipment purchases, and on occasion, that may be prudent and appropriate, but it may also be prudent in the future to finance equipment, to ensure that we have equipment that is replaced and repaired on a timely basis, and again, is operable and functions well for our firefighters and for the benefit of the broader community. So again, when we consider a subsequent motion to approve or not to approve, I'll be voting in favor of this particular motion. There are additional comments before we vote on the motion to acknowledge? Mayor Protam Dillon?
So thank you. I'd like to just quickly address Councilmember Rice and just sort of give her a quick glimpse into the life on the Fire Board. You have four very different municipalities working together. It's an awkward structure, because it's a quasi-decision-making body, and that's one of the biggest problems that that board has of what is its authority to actually approve, what has to come back here, and it's just a pass-through to the board member. So that has been a big issue. There's been a lot of resistance to change. For the last five years, at almost every meeting, I have requested that that body move to having monthly meetings. It has not been well received. They continue to meet only every other month. It's very difficult to stay in the know when you're meeting every other month. We were not getting information in between meetings. We are now starting to get some information in real time, so, which is a great improvement. There's just a lot of things that happen. The meetings are not recorded. Meetings, the minutes are very basic, Robert's Rules minutes, so there's no way to kind of go back and sort of tell you, for you to go back and see on your own. And they're very abbreviated meetings. For the first five or six years I was on that committee, those meetings were less than 15 minutes. People had other plans. They just, we just went through the agenda. There was never discussion. I'm sure Ms. Champion can tell you, I think generally, most of the time at meetings was spent with me asking questions. I think that's part of the reason I'm no longer on the Fire Board. And I think that there are ways in which things can be done differently. The issue becomes, the greatest issue with that body is we are accustomed to running our municipality in a certain way. We're very formal in our processes. In that arena, it's completely different. And so it is hard to bring things back. Things happen in real time. The budget that you see that is attached here was the budget that was given. There's no other documentation. There's no year-to-date actuals that were given. There is no backup to it. This is the document that we were given. So what you're getting is what we get from the board. So that's, you know, and I think that Ms. Champion has done great strides in bringing through processes so that we are better, you know, informed about things that are going forward, and I think it's going to take a little while, and it's going to take some hand-holding, but I'm sure that the board will eventually get there. It was also a huge, let's throw everything at the wall, let's get a strategic plan, a capital improvements plan, some policies, a whole bunch of things. Oh, and we're going to change our complete bylaws and structure, all at the same time. And so it just turned into a big document salad. So I think that there are different ways to do things, hopefully lessons learned, and with the new group, they will move forward and do things differently. I appreciate that.
If there's nothing further, there's a motion on the floor simply to acknowledge receipt of the memorandum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I see how the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve the fire budget, the fire capital budget as presented?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion on that? Moved by Lesh, seconded by CEO. No? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I see how the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to acknowledge receipt of the memorandum and to approve or not to approve the fire operational budget as presented on February the 10th, 2025?
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Lesh to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Second? Is there a discussion on the motion? Let me just say, and I think my position has been pretty clear on this. First of all, with respect, I take issue with some of the statements that were made about action that was taken by the Fire Board last year about updating bylaws, developing a strategic plan, and beginning a risk matrix. I think those were items that were long overdue, and it was a heavy lift, but I think it was important and timely, and I in no way regret the board taking action on all of those items in the 2024 calendar year. I first mentioned the need to do an independent analysis and review of the Fire Department either in 2022 or 2023. I'm very glad that my council colleagues agreed to allocate the financial resources and to engage an external third party to do an evaluation of the Fire Department. That is ongoing. Again, we anticipate completion of that review either in May or June of this year. I'm very eager to see the results of that analysis and to consider those with Councilmember Lesh, Ms. Champion, and their colleagues on the Fire Board. I think that should be the document that helps to guide budget decisions and strategic allocations of resources in the ensuing years. So at this juncture, I would not vote in favor of the budget as presented. As this acting city manager, and I noted to the fire chief earlier today when we met with him, I also see some deficiencies with the budget process. I'm of the opinion, as I articulated at our most recent meeting, that it's no longer feasible or appropriate, excuse me, to convene a budget work group, but rather that budget proposals, various proposals, be considered by the entire Fire Board at a posted open meeting, and also that invitations be extended to the either township treasurers or financial representatives of the four participating municipalities. In the spirit of compromise, I probably would have, would be amenable to the proposal to add some additional employees to the front line, but not having received that independent analysis yet, I could not in good conscience vote in favor of an operational budget that includes both a fire marshal and additional employees. So with greatest respect, I will be voting no on this proposal. If the Fire Department decides to move forward with the integration of a fire marshal and additional firefighters, we will of course assist them in every way possible. We want to ensure the success and vitality of that department long-term, and we want to be a cooperative and contributing partner to the success of that agency. So that's my statement. Are there any additional comments relating to this motion? Mr. Girbon?
Again, my concerns are, and I will state it again, there's millions of dollars of liabilities that have not been effectively addressed, that are going to be long-term liabilities that need to be resolved. There are expectations and things that just are not being addressed in a strategic approach to this, and I know we've worked for the board and some individuals have worked hard to make this happen. We need a future, and we need to understand what it is, and I'm the one that was helping to push to make sure that the study happened to analyze this, because it was continuing to be dragged on without being submitted and done. Our former city manager did not feel it was one of the things that needed to be done until we pushed on it and had it. We're going to have information, and it may not be the information that the fire chief believes is going to support his position. So when that comes through, I can't wait until we see it and make sure that we can make a decision on what this community really truly needs and looks at it from a larger perspective with real data and not necessarily information that was pulled from somewhere that may not be substantiated.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Councilmember Rice, before your vote?
I too have concerns about the data that's been used to sell us on this budget. I fully support, you know, two in, two out, and making sure that firefighters are safe and making sure that we're meeting all OSHA requirements. I do not subscribe to some of the future outlooks of needing a fire marshal. I believe that it would actually be more beneficial to have a more administrative role and with our chief having a fire marshal capability, taking on some of those things. So again, it's all about these decisions being made in a vacuum and not with, you know, data and things to support it. I am going to vote to approve this simply because I want to show support for the men and women of our Fire Department, but I greatly look forward to that assessment coming back to us, so that next year, we potentially will have actual data to put forth, you know, real budgets and, you know, make sure that we're really doing a service to the health and wellness of our community, as well as making sure that our tax dollars are going to the absolute most appropriate venues that they need to go to. So again, I will support this simply because I support the safety and wellness of our community, but with an asterisk of not being pleased.
Any additional comments before we vote? Mayor Protam Dillon?
Thank you. Just to clarify, any vote does not mean that there is a lack of support for our firefighters. So I just want to make that clear, that this is not a firefighter issue. This is a budget issue, and to say that this city does not support its firefighters is false, and I will repeat that, it is false.
Thank you. If there are no additional comments or discussion on the motion, we have a motion on the floor moved by Lesh, seconded by CEO to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Show of hands on that one. Who are in favor, raise your hand. Okay? And opposed? So motion passes four to three. Thank you very much. We move on to new business item 25-50. This is dam feasibility study. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt.
I'll move that.
Moved by CEO to acknowledge receipt, seconded by Girbon. Mr. Girbon, or Councilmember Girbon, you're the individual who wanted this item pulled. Did you care to make a comment at this time?
Yeah. Basically, wanting to make sure that although we're not taking official action on what is to happen with the dam, we are taking and giving some direction as to what we want to see come from our city staff and from individuals to the next step. There's so much that has to be done in order to get this understood and what we need to do and the dollar amounts and what are the options. I just think we need to have a period of time in which we identified, and I believe we felt that was going to be late October.
31st?
No, 6th. 6th was what was articulated in the, yeah.
I was thinking late September. So that was my push on that one, and I appreciate again the work that Ms. Humphries has done, Spicer. I know there's a lot of information, perhaps maybe we want to see that 800 pages? I don't know where that is. I mean, if that's out there and people want to read it. I think there's so many ideas that this community wants to come together, but for me, knowing what we have and what it's going to cost and who's going to pay for it is one of the biggest things. And one other thing I want to mention, when we talk about liability, we are only insured $500,000 on that dam should it fail. Then it becomes an issue of the taxpayers. So we need to do something, and just like the rec center where we had to do an interim fix, I am supportive of whatever we need to do, and it may be $1 to $200,000 to figure out what we need to do immediately, but going forward from here to the really big fixes or whatever, needs more information. Thank you.
Yeah, I think per Mr. Girbon's statement, unless there's objection from the DA, I think if there are any kind of short-term fixes or repairs that are necessary, I think we want staff to move forward, secure the resources, and bring the appropriate motions to city council. So please don't hesitate if there are things that need to be done in the next several months or in the ensuing year. I think we're obviously, excuse me, I think all of us are amenable to taking that action.
If you look at our clear government, our capital plan, we have a $6 million placeholder out there in 2031, but there's a, it's an odd number that's in clear government, because we have some, you know, $50,000. We've got some smaller fixes planned exactly in the short term.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments pertaining to this motion, simply to acknowledge receipt? Okay, it's been moved by CEO, seconded by Girbon to acknowledge. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I see how the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 25-51, special assessment resolution for fire protection. This has become an annual item for the last several years. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Treasurer Finch to adopt or not to adopt resolution number 2551, Fire Special Assessment District.
Move to acknowledge and adopt.
Oh, boy. I'm going to go with Girbon on that one, since I promised him previously, and I'll let Lesh be the second. So that was a motion to acknowledge and to adopt. Treasurer Finch, appreciate your patience this evening. God bless you for hanging with us. Would you care to make any comments, and then I'll defer to the acting city manager if she'd like to add anything for the record? Again, per my comments, this has become an annual thing. This is nothing new for city council, but it is a required action, so we would appreciate any obligatory comments primarily for the public's benefit.
Absolutely. It's past my bedtime, so bear with me. Each year, as part of the budget process, you all know that you approve multiple resolutions related to our budget process and the setting of tax rates. So the resolution before you this evening is specific to that Fire Special Assessment. There's obviously been much conversation about the fire budget tonight. I want to touch on the financial implications of those proposed changes and how that translates to our budget. While the total proposed fire budget is $3 million, I want to speak to our city-specific contribution. Our annual contribution will see a significant increase. In our current year, it's about $700,000. Looking forward with this proposal, we're looking at just over $1 million. Our Fire Services Special Assessment is our primary source of revenue to fund this contribution. That special assessment allows us to levy a maximum of $1 mil for our fire service. In our upcoming fiscal year, $1 mil is going to collect approximately $610,000, which is obviously a significant shortfall for that $1 million contribution. This means that in addition to the $1 mil levy, we're also going to need to contribute about $400,000 from our general fund. I would like to be clear that we already levy $1 mil, so we are not talking about an increase on the tax bill. We are talking about an increase from our general fund contribution. This is obviously going to be an ongoing conversation in the coming weeks as we work to finalize our operating budget, but for this evening, staff is recommending that mayor and council approve the full levy of the $1 mil for this Fire Special Assessment.
Very good. Acting city manager Cold, do you have any additional comments? Acting city manager Cole, do you have any additional comments?
No.
No. I appreciate that succinct report. Thank you very much. Mr. Gearbaugh, did you have a question for city treasurer?
Yeah, can you clarify, if you, either one of you know, what are we contributing in addition to $610? What's our, what's our current amount that we're contributing this year? Does it exceed the $1 mil?
Yes.
Yes, it does. I think it's just shy of $200,000. I'm going to say it's about $180,000 in addition to that $1 mil levy.
So the assumption is that we will now have to contribute $400,000 going forward to our general fund, but this year, or this coming year, the idea was that we're taking out of fund balance, correct?
That's right.
I guess this issue is going to come up, and this is again another issue when we're talking about millages. If we're going to have to get this to the public, then we're going to have to ask them for another mil or whatever it is to pay for fire. Again, this is my concern that's been out there. So what do we have in terms of addressing this? Because in my understanding, our former city manager thought that we would basically just a special assess it without a vote of the people. I have a big problem with that. So whatever we need to do in order to get that determined, so that everyone understands what it's costing them, I would like to, and I hope my fellow members of council will agree that we need to proceed and see what we need to do in order to make sure this happens.
Mayor, Clerk, and I are busy making a plan for the next and upcoming years because obviously we cannot continue to fund this out of general fund surpluses because it will be gone very quickly.
Yeah, the, I think you're absolutely correct. This, the current trajectory we are on of utilizing a special assessment, which we can only utilize it at a levy of $1 mil, and then drawing from our fund balance is not sustainable, and so it cannot continue in perpetuity. And to the inference that was made, that that's indeed correct. There at some point needs to be a conversation with the broader electorate and a vote of the electorate to determine what they want to do to appropriately finance fire operations in the Celine community. So obviously, not an issue we're going to resolve tonight, but to our fire board members and to the broader community, that needs to be a real focus of conversation in the next six to eight months because what we're doing currently just cannot continue in perpetuity. There any additional comments or questions for the city treasurer? That was excellent, very succinct presentation. We appreciate that. It's a motion then by Gearbaugh and Les to both acknowledge and to adopt. Is that correct, gentlemen?
Correct.
Okay. If there's no additional discussion on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say, having the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We move on to new business item 25-52, special events for 2025. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memorandum from city clerk Royal and to approve or not to approve the 2025 special event applications and authorize or not authorize the waiver of in-kind fees in an amount not to exceed $45,000.
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Mayor Protim Dillon, simply to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, was that Rice?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. City clerk Royal, do you care to give some obligatory comments? And please pull that microphone as close to you as possible so that our council colleagues and the members of the audience can hear your remarks.
So this is our yearly request for waiver of fees for special events, and these are the same events that were done last year with the exception that we have two new ones, a Halloween event and winter vendor market, and I've included the costs and the estimates.
City manager Cole, any additional remarks?
Just a reminder that this is in-kind services, and additionally, our new DPW director, Zach Kavla, went thoroughly through these adjustments and estimates and has increased them to be more in line with what they had been in the past.
Great. Mayor Protim Dillon, do you want to begin with questions or comments?
Sure. Well, first and foremost, obviously, it's an increase, and I think that this body's going to have to try to figure out, I think I calculated it out, it's like a 12% increase over last year. We're going to have to, the number just keeps going up every year, and I know we had, we had hoped that when Celtic Festival fell off, that we were going to sort of level, but then we recalculated to real time what our actual costs were, including real overtime and benefits and things like that to go, that are associated with it. So our numbers became a little bit more realistic. They do keep climbing, and this sort of falls back into the bucket of, is it a need or is it a want? And so when we're talking about fire increases and rec center increases and, you know, all these other things, we need to kind of be cognizant of this, and so what I'm trying to figure out is what is the best way to approach this? Should we put a cap on things and say, we're willing to give you $10,000, anything over that's on yours? And, you know, and that's just a number I'm throwing out there, of we figure out like what it is. We do have two new events, and there isn't a lot of information with them. There's absolutely no police required for a nine-hour event, so that makes me a little bit nervous, and kind of understanding what it is since we don't really have like a clear understanding of what the needs are going to be. The other big thing that I want to say is a lot of these events are happening in the parking lot behind, behind Bennys. And so what I want to understand is, were the businesses that are going to be impacted by them contacted? Do they understand that, you know, every Thursday night, the parking lot's going to be used? There are several events that are going to happen on a Saturday and some spilling into a Sunday. How is that going to impact them for patron parking? And just sort of understanding this, and I mean, I have a lot of things, I don't know whether we just need to revisit some of these events, and not saying that they don't need to happen, but maybe they need to happen in a different way, in a different manner. There was an ask for a police officer, like basically as a crossing guard at Michigan Avenue. I think we're going to have to really look at these things. I know that we combined at one point the tree lighting into the parade because we were concerned about safety. I don't know that that's the best method moving forward. It's, there's a whole lot going on all at the same time. It's a bit chaotic. We had a downtown event, we had the tree lighting, we had a road race, and then we had the parade, and I don't know, maybe that needs to be broken out a little bit. Maybe the tree lighting does need to go back to a different night. And kind of understanding these things, and I will again say, in my opinion, the success of the Celine Main Street Chunk or Treat event has caused it to completely outgrow the KeyBank parking lot. I think it's, it's no longer a safe environment. There's too many people, we've got Michigan Avenue there, we still have cars. I think that we really need to look at moving that event to a different location, and so as we start blanketly approving these, I just start to wonder, you know, should we start to review them individually again and really see, are they in the best interests of our community, and is there ways in which we can enhance them to make them bigger, better, safer, whatever the case may be, while still being mindful of the city's budget?
Do you care to comment? Or the city clerk is welcome to comment.
I do want to reassure you from the safety aspect, that Chief Brantick has reviewed all of the applications and signed up on them, so I feel very confident that if there was a safety concern with an event, that she would certainly be communicating that to us and not approving it. As far as the limit, I think that what we potentially could do is go back to kind of the drawing board and evaluate our special events policy, how we're processing these things, look at some how some other communities are doing it, just make sure we have our best practices in place.
Additional questions? Councilmember Gearbaugh, and then Mr. Councilmember CEO.
Just a quick one. I'm looking at the cost for the Memorial Day parade compared to the holiday parade, and are all those costs covered by the chamber when they put that parade on?
These are in-kind services, so by cost, do you mean that they're paying to?
Well, it seems like, I'm kind of surprised that we have like $5,700 associated for Memorial Day and that we only, we don't have really anything for the holiday parade when we put up barricades and trucks and things like that. So is something missing from this report?
Perhaps, I suppose there could be, but at our peak through it and our valuation of it, I think there was only one police officer that was needed for the holiday parade from us for directing traffic. I am certain that Chief Brantick looked through that.
Sorry, I'm looking at DPW costs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'm seeing that there's $6,000. I mean, I'm looking at this one, it says, yeah, 2025. It says equipment supplies and everything.
What page?
It's the next to last page. There's two pages on there. It's the summary sheet.
Are you talking about the increase from?
25 special event costs is what I'm looking at, and on it, it said there was $11,000 was spent for the Memorial Day parade, but it shows nothing for the holiday parade.
It is, it's down, it says holiday parade slash tree lighting, it's on that second line. You'll see the total is $13,932.75.
On the same page or on the subsequent page?
It's on that same page.
Oh.
This is the document that's the easiest one to look at.
Yeah, but I'm looking at this one, I'm looking at this summary one, so it looks misleading, that's why I'm talking about it.
Yeah, that word lighting is the rest of that.
The document that you held up, what page is that?
For me though, again, for me though, is trying to understand why it's $2,600 more expensive than, to do that than the holiday parade when we know there's more people and it's a bigger area that's covered, so just wondering.
The parade, the holiday parade is more expensive because of the tree lighting, because they also include putting up the tree, decorating the tree. That includes everything for the DPW for that, so it's not just the day of the parade. It's also all the extra expenses for putting that tree up, going and getting it, removing it.
Right, there's labor, but I'm looking at equipment and supplies, so it costs more in supplies and equipment at the Memorial Day parade than it does at the Christmas parade.
I think that's because of the tent. The tent rental was quite expensive last year, and that was the first year we did that.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Councilmember Gearbaugh, any additional questions for the city clerk? No, I'm sorry, Mr. CEO, you had had your hand up. My apologies.
Do we have any idea at all what's envisioned by Celine Main Street for this October 25th Halloween event for adults and teens?
No. No, I got very little information. I included the application, so what you have in the packet is what I have.
Can city staff follow up with Celine Main Street? Oh, I'm sorry, Mary is present. Would you like to come forward and, I didn't, I didn't see you in the back either. My apologies. Mary Detling, our director of Celine Main Street is present. We welcome you, thank you for your patience. Do you want to respond to Mr. CEO's question?
Absolutely. So this is a brand-new idea for us, and we're still fleshing everything out with it. What I do know that we want, last year, we were kind of talking about doing some combination of like a witches' walk plus a, like a, just an activity for teens such as makeup, things like that. Those things are kind of being put back on the plate, and we're thinking about closing down that, that parking lot for potentially like an outdoor band for that event as well, and it's going to kind of partner along with the farmer's market during the day, so, so we'll just kind of continue that into the evening, and they're going to be having Halloween events that day as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Councilmember Rice?
Well, we have Mary there. Could you please, you know, you don't need to give us numbers or things like that. So I think one of the things that we fight with up here every year in our minds is the return on investment of our community and making sure that these in-kind donations, if you will, that the city is providing through services match a return on investment to our, either our downtowns or what we're getting back from our community and the city. Can you talk to that a little bit for us?
I can, I guess. Out the top of my head, I know that our downtown events, whether they're sponsored by Celine Main Street or whether at Summerfest or even the holiday parade, they tend to bring the biggest, biggest amount of people into town for one event. That does help the local businesses, and there are some events that we have in downtown that helps local businesses more than others. For example, our, our Coco Crawl, it gets people inside the doors versus our Oktoberfest is more of a fundraiser for us, so while we utilize them, some of the businesses and they do see some return, it's not the same, and it's probably not anywhere near the same for the retail. So I've had, I haven't had actual number data, but I have that anecdotal data from, from the businesses saying when their sales are up or when they're down. The recent XO XO extravaganza in downtown to celebrate February and the Valentine's Day, I heard from several locations that their sales were better than previous Thursdays in the month of February, so that's a, that's a good thing. So we try to balance our events so that they are, some of them are more community events, drawing people together to see what is in downtown and to bring foot traffic to downtown, but some is specifically geared towards getting people into the shops and stores. Ladies Night Out is coming out, and that's been a traditional example of that, so of getting people inside the stores and shops and restaurants.
Okay, thank you. That was anecdotal, it's fine. Thanks.
Any additional questions for Mary before we dismiss her from the podium? Good, thank you, appreciate you being here. We have a motion on the floor simply to acknowledge receipt. If there are no additional questions for staff, I'll call for the vote. It was moved by Dillon, seconded by Rice. All those in favor of acknowledging the memorandum from the city clerk, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say, having the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve and to authorize or not authorize?
Move to approve and authorize.
Second. Okay, that was moved by Rice, seconded by Gearbaugh, to approve and to authorize. Is there any additional discussion on that motion? Councilmember Rice?
I just want to mimic what our director of Celine Main Street said, and in many conversations that I've had with, with our downtown businesses, I do know that there are some events that we host that do actually negatively affect our businesses, and that's just kind of the way it goes with events, but I think one of the benefits of having these types of events in our community is just sort of to get our name out there. People want to come to Celine for Oktoberfest, they hear about it from all over the place. Some of the bands that play at Summerfest actually have a following, and people see on their Facebook page that they're coming to Celine, so they come to downtown Celine for that. And so, you know, there is a return on investment. I do know that we need to, you know, take a, take a fine-tooth comb and make sure that we are, when we are providing these services, we're providing the correct level of services. I really appreciate that the new DPW director actually went through it a little bit closer, and that is why that number went up, because I think part of the problem we've had over the recent years is that we've estimated way too low, and then we've got a sticker shock at the end. So when I'm seeing a more actual number, like when we get the actuals back next year or for a little more closer, I think we can start getting a little bit more comfortable with where we're at with all of these services that we're providing, and then maybe we can start looking in the future on how we can offset that a little bit. I think it's been so up in the air and all over the place over the last few years that we don't even know what to do with this information. So that's my hope and dream for this year is that maybe we've got it a little bit closer to actual, and then next year, we can look at how we can maybe, you know, finance that a little bit more closely.
Any additional comments before we vote? Mr. Gearbaugh, or Councilmember Gearbaugh, and then Mayor Protim Dillon.
Just to say that, you know, we have a couple traditions, which has been the holiday parade and then also the Memorial Day parade, and those are the ones that we use to recognize our heroes and the people that have sacrificed their lives and such for this country, especially in the Memorial Day parade. I think it's the one thing that we can do as a community to show that support, and I will continue to support that while I'm on council.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Dillon.
Thank you. So just to clarify my earlier point, you know, we're not going to make a change at the 11th hour here. I don't see that. I mean, there's already planning for these events in process, so to kind of pull funding is, you know, and processes, I don't think would be fair. I think what I was looking at is, should we, moving forward, reassess our events and figure out if there's ways in which we can streamline things, figure out if there's fewer DPW, if we can, I mean, Main Street has found a way to utilize their volunteers where we're dropping off barricades and they're setting them up and taking them down, and there may just be more ways in which we can do things like that. Unfortunately, most of our events happen on weekends, and so that also adds to the cost of them as far as labor. But I also want to make sure, moving forward, outside of money is the staffing and that we have adequate staffing to not just cover these, but that we're able to have police out patrolling our streets or DPW out doing what needs to be done in our community at the same time. So trying to find that balance, I think, is what I would like to see moving forward, and I think that could easily be, you know, a post-event, you know, wrap-up and just assessment and sort of figure out from those departments where they think that there could be opportunities to, to reduce staffing.
Very good, thank you. Is there any additional discussion or debate on this motion? There will be a motion on the floor moved by Rice, seconded by Gearbaugh, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item twenty-five dash fifty-three, determination of mayor and council salaries for 2025, 2026. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memorandum from city clerk Royal and to approve or not to approve the proposed 2025, 2026 salaries for the mayor and council members as recommended by the Local Officers Compensation Committee. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge.
Moved by Rice, simply to acknowledge. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Potem Dillon. City, not city manager, city clerk Royal, I am noting the absence of Rebecca Schneider, the chair of our Local Officers Compensation Committee this evening. Did you care to provide a brief synopsis as to the discussion that was held, that was, that transpired, excuse me, at their most recent meeting and the recommendation they're forwarding to council?
Yes, there was a meeting of the Compensation Commission, and they requested that, or they are suggesting a nominal raise of two hundred dollars per year for the city, for the mayor and for council. And they would like to thank everybody for all their hard, their time, hard work and expertise. They say this isn't what you're worth, but this is what they think is reflective of the amount that's currently available.
Very good. Other questions for the city clerk? Councilmember Rice?
So though I moved only to acknowledge this, the same thing happened two years ago that we moved to acknowledge it, and we said we would discuss it at a later date. Where we failed was we did not discuss it at a later date. Therefore, we actually did not approve our increases two years ago. It just defaulted to approve our increases because we missed the thirty-day period under which to discuss it. So we have thirty days to basically say no. So my hesitancy comes in only that we didn't approve it last time. I think we need to just sit on it. We'll have a reevaluation in two years. It's nominal, but because we are really looking at the amount of money that we're spending, the amount of money that we're asking from our constituents, and we did not approve this two years ago, I'm very hesitant to approve it today.
Yeah, I don't have any questions for the city clerk. During the subsequent motion, I would vote against approving. The dollar amount is nominal, but there's some symbolism and optics at play here. And as my colleague just indicated, we're asking for some sacrifices and, you know, some, I guess it's just, that's the best way to describe it. We're asking for citizens and staff to sacrifice. I think there will be some tough votes and decisions made on a policy and financial level before the end of the calendar year. And I think it's important, at least for me as the mayor, to share in that sacrifice. So I will be voting not to approve if a subsequent motion is offered from the floor. Is there any additional discussion or comment? Mayor Potem Dillon, then Mr. Geerbock, Councilmember Geerbock?
Thank you. It is a nominal amount, but it's also a ceremonial amount, and I think it's important. I think people need to feel their value. If you look at their numbers, in 2024, we had forty-four regular meetings. That does not include committees, commissions, all the other things that we are required to attend. This is a huge sacrifice of time from our families, from our careers, and from our community. I don't see that it's a sacrifice by the city. It's fourteen hundred dollars. I think that is nominal. And I think it sends the wrong message moving forward to people that may want to sit at this, at this day of someday, that, you know, oh, you're gonna, we're not in it for the money. Everyone knows that. That's not why we're here. But people need to realize that they have value, and dollars have value. And I think it's really important to keep up with that.
Thank you. Councilmember Geerbock?
The fact that I voted against an operational budget earlier, I cannot vote in good sense and walk the talk. If I vote for this increase, I'll be voting no.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor simply to acknowledge receipt. That was moved by Rice, seconded by Dylan. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve?
Move to not approve.
Moved by Rice to not approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Seo. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Mayor Potem Dillon?
Yes, I'm not comfortable voting no for two years. If we want to look at this moment in time, that's one thing, but I will not commit to another year when there can be other people sitting in these seats.
Fair enough.
So I would like to, if we want to do that, I would be willing to split the vote and say there's no 2025 increase, but then we need to reevaluate in 2026.
My understanding is you either accept or reject. There's no modification. Is that correct, clerk Royal? Is that your understanding as well, acting city manager?
So can we accept a zero increase for 2025 and then an increase for 2026?
No.
As a modification.
Yeah.
Can you clarify, but the Compensation Committee can meet every year. There's nothing stopping that.
Every two years.
Every two years. Okay, just clarifying. Thanks.
It coincides with the term of the mayor and three council members. Yeah.
Which is going to need to change anyway.
Yeah, perhaps. Yep. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? We have a motion on the floor moved by Rice, seconded by Seo to not approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay.
Nay.
Eyes have it, the motion carries six to one. Thank you. We move on to new business item twenty-five dash fifty-five, transgender day of visibility resolution. This will be a motion to approve the resolution as submitted. Moved by Geerbock or seconded? Seconded by Harmout. Councilmember Rice, you were the individual who requested this item be removed from the consent agenda. Did you care to comment or raise a question or concern?
I do. I care to comment briefly. Hold one moment, please. So as we vote on this resolution to recognize international transgender day of visibility, my hope is that this serves as an important reminder for the need for inclusion and understanding and equality, while also acknowledging the challenges and discrimination to the transgender community as they face it today. Twenty twenty-three proclamation by the state of Michigan noted that around thirty-two hundred, thirty-two thousand nine hundred residents identify as transgender. In the two years ensuing, I'm sure that that number has gone up. This number highlights the presence and significance of the transgender community within Michigan, and underscores the importance of recognizing transgender individuals in our state and supporting them through inclusive policies and resources. As some federal and state legislators work to dismantle the rights that our LGBTQIA+ community have worked so hard for, I hope that my council colleagues, everyone in this room, and everyone online, and all members of our community stand behind this resolution and commit to ensuring that the city of Celine is and remains safe, welcoming, and affirming city for all, regardless of gender identity and expression.
Thank you for the comment. We appreciate our DEI committee taking a look at this resolution. We appreciate those who spoke this evening regarding this matter. In particular, we appreciate Charlie for bringing this issue forward and recommending its inclusion on tonight's agenda. Are there additional comments or questions? We have a motion on the floor. It was moved by, this one was moved by, I'm sorry, who was it moved by? I'm sorry, it was moved by Geerbock, seconded by Harmout to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to the discussion portion of tonight's agenda. I would encourage you to exercise some brevity because it's about ten o'clock, and I still want to get additional comments from the public if there are individuals so inclined to make a comment during the second public comment period. So again, I'm going to start to my left and into my right. Mr. Geerbock, do you have reports, updates from boards, commissions, or committees, or other announcements?
Planning commission did not meet at this point in time. I believe we'll have something on the twenty-sixth. I think so. I can't remember. There's hesitation, but there's some ordinance that we're reviewing, and they may or may not be ready for that. Other than that, the one question I had, and the mayor's gone, I wanted to ask about park evaluation tours, how those were basically brought about, who is recommending that, as it seems to be a direction, and I'd like to know.
Circle back to that, Mr. Geerbock, when he returns to the room. Here's Rice.
So one question, I know that I sent this via email. We are ordering a transgender pride flag, correct? Can we promote that? We'll all get around maybe at nine AM on the thirty-first and raise that flag together so that members of our community can join us quasi-ceremonially?
I know that there was an order placed for the flag, and I didn't, I didn't know we were having a flag raising that day. So I think that we can, you know, get together and discuss and, you know, make a decision on that.
Yeah, there's been a few requests from the community that they would like to be there when the flag gets raised, and I think that that's wonderful. So maybe if we just did something at like nine AM so we can get that flag right up there first thing in the morning. But yeah, just if you could just let us know, and then we can put it out on the DEIA page, and we'll let the community know that. Other than that, Parks Commission and Youth Council tomorrow. Looking very forward to that. And then we, I have also reached out to some community members who have strong roots in our LGBTQIA+ community, who are going to help us with our strategic plan for the DEIA Commission and hope to bring that into our community health and wellness initiative very soon in the near future. So keep, stay tuned for some public engagement as we move through that process.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Rice. Councilmember Harmout, any reports, updates, or reports from boards, commissions, or committees?
No, I don't.
Councilmember Lash?
Arts and Culture will be meeting on Thursday, and I encourage citizens to check the Facebook page for anything coming out of Arts and Culture.
Councilmember Seo?
Busy week coming up. Environmental Commission, I believe, Wednesday night, seven o'clock, right here. And on Thursday, we have cemetery board meeting at three PM here in the council workroom. And I unfortunately will not be there because I'll be going to quarterly Semcog meeting in Detroit that same time.
Very good. Mayor Potem Dillon?
Thank you. I've got kind of a long one, so bear with me on this one. I had an opportunity to attend a new community coalition. And this may not be their actual name. It's Community for Unhomed Housing Coalition. And I, together with Chief Police Chief Radzik and Deputy Police Chief Hartwick, attended the meeting. It was held last week, I believe. It was the second meeting of that group. And it's a group that's being led by Jamil Aikens of Celine Area Social Services and Pastor Kimberly Seacrest of the First Perez Presbyterian Church. It currently encompasses members which include representatives from local churches, Veterans Affairs, Celine Area Schools, the city of Celine, and many community members. At this time, the group is in a fact-finding period, and they're exploring information options and opportunities to move people that are unhomed into transition housing from there to permanent housing and what that would look like in our community, if it's something our community could directly support, i.e., we have housing here for them, if it's a means of financially supporting them, or partnering with the county, other, our municipal partners surrounding us, something like that. And the other part of it is that housing issues are generally a piece of a larger puzzle. There are sometimes health issues, mental health issues, there's domestic violence. There's a lot of different, there's financial aspects to it. And so we're also looking at partnering with social workers that would be available for part of our police department or to go on calls and such. Right now, the biggest issue and part of the fact-finding is trying to figure out those that are unhomed in our community, getting an actual count. Because, you know, you'll hear of something, oh, I saw somebody sleeping in their car. Was it just because they were in between meetings, or is it that they truly do not have stable housing? And so trying to understand that and figure out what that number looks like and if it is something that can be managed within our, our area. But obviously, funding is going to be a very key element to it, and so that's going to be a next hurdle piece. But at this point, the group really encourages and welcomes community members that have an expertise or a passion in community outreach and housing transition to join them at their next meeting, which will be April tenth. I believe it's a Thursday. It's at two PM in the afternoon at the one oh nine Culture Exchange, which is the Celine Main Street offices downtown. If you've got questions or want to kind of get a little bit of a better understanding, Jamil Aikens at Celine Area Social Services should be your primary point of contact. If you reach out to me, I can connect you with people if you need names or numbers. So it's, it's going to be an exciting addition to our community, but it is a huge and heavy lift right now. And so the first thing I will say is if you see something, say something. I always say that in every situation. If you see something that doesn't seem right, you see a student in a school, the school has resources. If you see somebody in your church, or you see somebody in a park or something like that, don't plaster it on social media. Please contact our police department. They have the mechanisms to handle these situations. And lastly, I want to make it very clear that there is no correlation between the unhomed and crime. That is a horrible myth, especially in our community. And so we need to break that stigma and really come together to solve this crisis.
Thank you. Appreciate that synopsis. Appreciate you attending that meeting. I just have one update, and it's from the Hiring Committee for a Permanent City Manager. We had our second meeting last week. Great progress is being made on the development of a community profile and enhanced job description. We will be releasing a community survey beginning next Wednesday that will be online for one week. We encourage residents, business owners, and employees to fill that out. It is being circulated to the Hiring Committee currently. Then will be shown to city council for your comments, looking primarily for major flaws or deficiencies later this week. But again, we post it online next Wednesday with the assumption being that it will be on for one week. So once it is online, we'll make sure that you're given notifications so that you can promote it through your various channels and platforms. And I think our last item, just go ahead.
I was going to say, before you finish, we need to circle back to Mr. Geerbock.
Oh, I'm sorry. He did not go. My apologies.
No, no, I did. No, it's the question about the park evaluation.
Yeah, go ahead.
In your recent letter or email that you sent out this week, you indicated that there's going to be this, and I think you'd mentioned it previously, about a park evaluation tour. Can you give a background on that and how and who is committing to that and who's requested it? Trying to understand, because it seems like we're going to be putting some staff time and such into it. Generally, we've done that with either approved task group or something of that nature.
So I believe, I appreciate the opportunity to clarify, Mr. Councilmember Geerbock. I believe the issue first came up indirectly in the waning months of 2023, based on a conversation with then Parks and Rec Director Carlos Scruggs about the age of the ROMP structure, specifically that amenity reaching the end of its useful life or nearing the end of its useful life. And then separate conversations that I and others had had with Parks Commissioners wanting to, Parks Commissioners noted a deficiency that they would really like to focus on a concrete tangible project in the ensuing years that directly correlated to the quality of life of Celine residents and the improvement of parks. So Councilmember Lash, who attends many of the Parks Commission meetings, and Councilmember Rice can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe I was present for two separate conversations before the Parks Commission, one at the end of 2023, shortly after Director Lambert assumed the role as Parks and Rec Director, and then again at the end of 2024. We had a discussion, a pretty lengthy, protracted discussion with the members of the Parks Commission, of which one of them is here this evening, about doing some regional park tours, very similar to what we did in 2021 and 2022 for the then Rec Center Task Force when we evaluated a number of facilities across the region. We wanted to visit some area parks that had done some really transformational projects with the understanding that the Parks Commission during this calendar year would evaluate that information, and then by the fourth quarter of 2025, issue a formal report to city council indicating what kind of improvements they would like to see in the future years. And obviously, it would be up to city council to codify, adopt, or move forward with those projects. But Director Lambert can correct me if I'm wrong. We've gotten good feedback from the Parks Commission. We're doing two separate tours, I believe.
Yes.
Yeah, so it includes trips to Rochester Hills, Commerce Township, Westland, and then facilities in Pittsfield, Chelsea, and Dexter. I actually believe that we could likely accommodate additional council members if you were interested. But that, I gave you, I threw a lot at you, Mr. Geerbock, so I'm happy to address any additional questions or concerns you may have.
Just for me, it's making sure. I know since we have a task force coming up for the Rec Center and what staff's going to be busy doing that too, just making sure that your priorities and things aren't being overstretched from the perspective of having yet another study and everything done out. But if it's being generated by the Parks Commission, and they're going to be doing the majority of the work and summarizing it all, then I don't see a concern with that at this point.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. If I may have, Councilmember Rice jump in here. We're thinking, or it's our assumption that the Parks Commission, the individual members are going to be doing the heavy lifting and most of the work on this.
Yeah, so this will be presented to council, I think in a couple of weeks, we're going to do our yearly presentation to council April seventh, and then with that, we'll also put forth our goals for Parks Commission. But our number five goal for Parks Commission, we call it maintain beauty, safety, accessibility, and health of parks, which we have also linked to some of the city's strategic plans. A couple of those activities underneath there are to visit other community parks and projects and evaluate and write recommendations for upgrades. And we're specifically honing in on Millpon Park, but we're also doing it with the caveat that if we see something really cool for one of the smaller parks that could be, you know, easily achieved through a grant or something like that. One of the things that we talk about a lot at Parks Commission is accessibility. And so looking at these unique parks and the, you know, fun accessibility things that they have where they've got things that you can touch and play and things that make noise and things like that, just kind of getting a feel for what's out there. So we do have two Parks Commission goals as it relates to these tours this year that will be kind of brought in front of council. No, you know, no decision-making, no, you know, engineering, no anything like that, but just like, hey, we've seen these things out in the community, and these are things that would, we think would fit really well within the Celine parks.
And as you mentioned, Mayor, about the ROMP structure, Sunshine, could you explain, are we doing anything to it or fixing some of the things on it this year? Because I, we're not going to fix this ROMP structure or replace it in two years. So if there's something we need to do and we need to allocate funds to fix either the ropes or some of the dangerous things that are on there, we need to do it.
We currently have a broken slide, and I know DPW is looking into a replacement of that slide right now, so that's one issue. And then the Safety Service, I think that is being looked at for funding for the safety. I think that is being looked at for funding for the safety service, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Girba, because I'll get questioned on this or criticized. The ROMP structure, again, 30 years old, nearing the end of its useful life. You're absolutely correct that some short-term investments can and should be made. I want to be clear, because there's no consensus on this, and it's ultimately the recommendation of the Parks Commission. There is the option of complete rehabilitation of that structure, very similar to what the city of Chelsea did with their Timbertown, which is the genesis of why we're visiting Chelsea in April. So I want to be clear that while it is gonna be in need of an infusion of cash, the option, cash, the option does exist of doing a complete overhaul of that structure, but we also want to consider other amenities and structures which may be more modern and beneficial to the broader community.
No, I'm fine with that. I just think that I've heard concerns for a number of years. Every year, there seemed to be something. I just want to make sure there is a thorough going over of it this year and making sure the things on that one, in addition to our other place structures, get fixed in a timely manner before April 30th or May 1st, when generally everybody starts going into our parks. There's no more excuse for not have those things fixed.
No, I agree. And it is, while it is an older structure, it is kind of our premier structure in town. And Mr. Girba, you've been around for a while. I don't mean that as a pejorative, but you know, you know the energy and enthusiasm and dollars that went into that structure. That was a great community success story, and so we do want to preserve it as long as possible. Go ahead.
If I could just say, because we did have a study done, gosh, I'd have to think about it, it was several years ago, I have seen the report on it. It is past its lifespan, but because of the maintenance that the city has done over the years, it has well exceeded that. And so I know every summer, DPW is down there, they're resealing it, they're attending to it, they're keeping up with it. So we're really fortunate that it has, you know, withstood the test of time, and it's definitely something that our community certainly enjoys, the children are out there all the time. But yes, accessibility features, you know, I think it's something that we need to look at and plan for the future instead of waiting till it's broken to then address it. So, yeah.
And one of the things about Mill Pond as well is, you know, we've got this pathway going in, we're talking about dam situations. It's kind of like, we would be doing a disservice if we weren't looking at Mill Pond, but it also doesn't mean we have to do anything immediately other than the fixes of the list that... So one of the things that we do at our Parks Commission meetings is we each have our own park, and we go take a look at things before the meeting, and then we bring that list of needs to Sunshine, and then Sunshine brings them to DPW. So we try desperately to keep up on things, but I do know that there is a lack of staffing to be able to properly attend to all of the needs in each of the parks, for sure.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Yep, thank you. Let's transition then to the second public comment period. We appreciate everyone's patience this evening. Under the Open Meetings Act, any person may come forward at this time, make comment or question at City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but of course, not required to state his or name and address for the record. You may begin, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council friends, thank you so much. Give me a second opportunity. I rise again to continue my suggestion of U-shaped tunnel, not straight like previously. People try this way to solve the problem of Mill Pond Dam. We have to think out of the box and also go look at the history of this city, of this country. The founding father, Orange Riston, why he selected here to bury and build his home here? Down the road over there, why we have the sock trail and collect the salt and animal come here? There is a reason, not just biologically, geologically, and go all the way back to the glacier, how this Michigan lake formed. There must be some reason. Please don't hesitate make decision because of money over there. I want to first start with a CIP, Capital Investment Plan. What is the capital? The true capital is in our brain, in our society, in our body, not on the table on the dollars calculated. We have to think about that more than just the dam. Without dam, there's no pond, but no pond, no Mill Pond anymore. So therefore, we have to think, we haven't exhausted all our wisdom, our love, and our experience. Before we make this, let me just tell about the Chinese history of Yellow River. My ancestor, not American, but I was Chinese ancestor, made a big mistake, cut the forest way up. No forest. Therefore, the river become yellow because of mud. Because of that, thousands of people died because of flood. History always repeat. If the human being only look at certain times, not zoom out, and also let's zoom out spatially. What if you look at the map, and you can see that? There's the interesting about Mill Pond. To the left or west of this Mill Pond, or maybe this river, there are 45 feet at least high rise suddenly. Why is that? Mr. Riston bury his bone because of that. And also, the city goes through that because US 12 make the Saline City is going to have more population. What if the city, its population become thirty, three times more? Then the children will say that, why they call it Mill Pond? Where is the pond? So please, think about out of the box, think out of the box of the space and time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Are there additional citizen comments this evening? Again, you'll have three minutes once you begin.
My allergies just decided to kick in right now.
No, it's fine.
In response to the special events budget, I'm confused as to how we can make things bigger, better, and safer, and at the same time, cheaper. Community events are an absolutely vital component to Saline citizens and businesses, and of course, it's necessary to hold them safer or safely. But in an attempt to limit new activities only to increase the size of current ones, limits the creativity and collaboration in the community. In regards to the dam feasibility study, I don't agree that short-term solutions make for good long-term outcomes. In fact, I believe that repeatedly relying on short-term fixes only succeeds in creating even bigger infrastructure issues, such as was seen with the water treatment plan. I personally am not 100% sold on removal or preservation of the dam at this point. I think an environmental impact analysis study is absolutely a responsible step to add at this point. I do think that Band-Aid solutions that kick the can farther down the road have not served the Saline community well in the past and should be avoided in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Libby. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate your patience this evening. Are there additional citizen comments? You may come forward when ready. You will have three minutes.
I just wanted to point out, wildlife moves a lot depending on the season, and the study was conducted in winter when, for instance, the Massachusetts Suga snake is probably hibernating, and turtles are probably hibernating. So I agree with Councilperson Rice that there should be further studies done, and I know it's probably a lot to ask, but one that covers all four seasons. So we know that animals that may, even though it said what species would be affected immediately in the project area, we don't know if they're traveling there probably in different seasons as a mating spot, or, for instance, the Massachusetts Suga snake goes to Stillwater to find prey. So it could be using that area in order to survive, and we wouldn't know it if it was just covered in the wintertime. I just wanted to point out also, the spotted turtles seek out Stillwater for mating season, so they are another one that we wouldn't know necessarily if they're there or not. And I know the study did say they're probably not there, so the probably didn't make me feel very good about saying, yeah, this is good, we can just proceed, you know. But I just wanted to say one additional thing is that if people were given the option to vote on this, they could choose the future of the city or have a part in choosing the future of the city as the way they see it, since this is such a big thing for many people in Saline. And if it's going to be a bill either way, why not give them the option to have, to vote so they can feel at least, you know, they had a say? And I think that would be a good point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any additional citizen comments this evening? Let me defer to the city clerk. Were there any written comments provided in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks read at this time? Easy enough. Then please note that we have a three-week gap between meetings. Actually, my apologies. You were made reference of during the second public comment period. Did you care to respond in any way?
Aye.
No, okay. I just wanted to give you the courtesy. Yep, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. We will be meeting again for a regular meeting on April the 7th. Again, to an earlier point, please sign up for updates on ClearGov and documents on demand. We appreciate all of the comments referenced, the dam, and please know there's a lot of additional matters to consider before a policy decision is made on that particular issue. And if there's nothing further to be brought forward, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting at 10:18. Moved by Girba, and I'll let CO be the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Prose nay. Eyes have it. We are adjourned. Woo! Sorry, Senator.[1773.69]